The Moraga Town Council. It's Wednesday, April 13th, 2022. Let's do a roll call. Council members, Macor?
Here.
Anoda?
Here.
McClure?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wolakki?
Here.
Mayor Soss is here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will be led in the pledge by our Parks and Rec Director, Brianna Brand.
All right. (applause). To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is Special Announcements. I wanted to let everyone know that the council met last Wednesday night at a special meeting in closed session, and that there are no reportable actions as a result of that meeting. Next, we have Proclamations and Presentations. The first is a set of presentations to outgoing committee and commission members. This is a celebration of their community service and a thank you for their years of dedication to this town. As everyone knows, this town runs on volunteerism and on public engagement, and the six honorees tonight exemplify all that is good about this place and all that is good about community service. So what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna say a few words about each recipient, then we will go to public comment, then I'll ask for council member comments on, for the whole group at once, and then we'll do a photo opportunity with all the recipients. So tonight, we honor and acknowledge first David Zeimer, who served with distinction for two terms on the Art in Public Spaces Committee. He was instrumental in supporting many of the public art sculptures that are currently on display throughout Moraga. And David, we have a certificate for you that we will give you at the end of the presentation. Next is Tim Freeman. Tim devoted a total of nine years to the Audit and Finance Committee. And in addition to his service on the committee, he served on a number of subcommittees over the years that took on special assignments. And Tim made more suggestions than we can count for improvements in our financial reporting processes that the town has implemented to the benefit of all of us. Next is Greg Crossley, who was a member and contributor to the Local Sales Tax Oversight Committee for four years. He brought to that committee integrity, a clear-headed vision, and a commitment to fiscal responsibility and to the residents of this town. Bob Foxhall was on the Sales, Local Sales and Tax Oversight Committee since its inception in 2012. And as one of the community proponents for Measure K Initiative, which was the sales tax, he was a particularly effective steward of the proper use of Measure K funds by the town. Next is Bob Giomi, who devoted eight years, or more than eight years, to Parks and Rec. His accumulated wisdom and his institutional knowledge were invaluable to the committee, and he was a regular at Park and Recreation Events. And then finally, but not least, Andrew Luter, who served on the Planning Commission for two two-year terms. And he served on the commission at a time when it had a very busy and important docket that was challenging and helped the committee steer its way through things like the Moraga Center specific plan, the wireless, small cell wireless ordinance, and the ordinance regarding accessory dwelling units. And throughout that, he provided objective, impartial, and level-headed points of view. So those are our honorees tonight, and is there anybody from the public who would like to say a few words? All right. Seeing no public comment, I suspect that my colleagues would like to say a few words about the group. Who would like to start? Mike?
Sure. Thank you. First, I'm actually gonna mention some names here. So David, Art in Public Spaces. I think that's so important for the town of Moraga, and I just wanna thank you for your contribution. And I can let you know, Community Service Day, we're trying to do more art, so we're trying to keep that momentum going. Tim Freeman, who I had a chance to serve with on the Audit Committee, and I'm getting a little reflection here, Tim, so it's hard to see ya. I'm sorry to see you go. I wish you could stay, but you dedicated a lot of years to our committee and helped in our financial discipline, so thank you. And then Greg and Bob, and Bob from, you know, the original Measure K. Measure K was so important to this town, you know, about $2.5 million of importance, and not just getting it, but then making sure it's used in the right way. So thank you, folks, for that. Bob and Park and Rec, I just, you know, love Park and Rec and the trails and all the programs we do, so that's fantastic. And finally, Andrew, who I served with on the Planning Commission, the pleasure to serve with him. So for all you folks, you know, we always say Moraga is a community of volunteers, and it's true for you folks, it's true for us, and we have all these great groups out there, and that's one of the things I love about this town. So thank all of you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you, Mike. Teresa?
Of course, I have to thank these people as well. First of all, David was on Art in Public Spaces, and he's so sweet. I saw him in the parking lot one day, and I talked to him a little bit, and I said, "Hey, how would you like to be on Art in Public Spaces?" And he said, "Well, what do I have to do?" And I said, "Can you breathe?" And he said, "Yes."[415.12][415.12](laughter) And I said, "Well, I think that's good enough." And so with that, he joined, and he was so awesome, like that, always willing to be part of it and to be, you know, part of our ad hoc, although we kinda had our hands tied a lot because West Commons wasn't open. But nevertheless, he was still a cheerleader for us, and that's kind of, at that time, is exactly what we needed. And I also want to say that Bob Foxhall was on Art in Public Spaces as well, and he was such a trooper. We had a booth at one of the Pear Festivals, and we had kids doing art and everything, and he was right there to help the kids with the art. I mean, it was, it was just really fun. And Tim, I've worked with him a little bit on Audit and Finance when I was mayor, and I felt so inadequate going to those meetings. I was kind of stressed out beforehand, and Tim made me feel right at home and made me feel like that I actually could contribute to that. So that was huge. That was kind of almost beyond the call of duty, so thank you, Tim. It really meant a lot. And Greg, I've never, I don't think I've served on anything with you, but I've seen you a zillion times being active all over town, and, you know, there's not an event that he's not there, and that's huge. I mean, that's what Moraga's all about. And so I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you do, both on committees and just, just being there, showing up is like 90%. So thank you, and I know that you will continue doing that because that's who you are. So thanks. I mean, even, you know, the Canyon Bridge, there you are. It's just awesome. Bob, I don't think I've, I've served with you, but maybe in the future, you'll sign up for something. There's always Art in Public Spaces. And Andrew, as a neighbor and a friend, thank you so much for showing up for Planning Commission. We really needed you, and you were there, and with your legal background, it was huge, really, really helped. So thank you. And for your family, your young family, that you would take that time away from your kids and your lovely wife, thank you to them as well. Okay?
Thank you, Teresa. Sona?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, you know, along with the lines of what Teresa was saying of just showing up, but I wanted to thank each of you for not just showing up, but also showing up with professionalism and with innovative ideas. That's what makes Moraga continue to evolve, and through volunteers that are coming with ideas across the board, across Parks and Rec, across Arts Commission. It's just stunning to me how much effort you all have put in and continue to inspire other people to put in to make this place as amazing as it is. So thank you to each of you.
Thank you, Sona. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna express a significant, sincere concern about the competency that we're losing by these folks leaving. And you look at the breadth of the positions, the subjects that are covered by these folks, the expertise, their knowledge, it's concerning to me. And, you know, my, my appreciation of everyone here is broadened because I know many of you serve multiple positions within the town, volunteer positions. And I can speak specifically about Craig and Bob serving on the Hacienda Foundation Board of Directors. Some very significant work in changing, in making that important asset to the town, that park, visible to a much broader piece of the population in the early 2000s. You guys are all great, positive examples of leader citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And just to wrap up, I think the certificates of appreciation that you're getting probably say it better than I can, so I am going to read what each of your certificates says. Certificate of Appreciation Recognizing, insert name, for Outstanding Service to the Town of Moraga as a member of the, insert committee. Volunteerism represents a time-honored tradition that benefits the Town of Moraga and contributes to the overall quality of life in our community. The success of the town is largely due to those who dedicate their time and energy toward making Moraga a better place to live, work, and play. Please accept the town's appreciation and gratitude for your four, for your years of service. Thank you all.[730.12][730.12](applause). All right, so if our, the folks we are recognizing are willing, we'd love to both hand you your certificates and take an opportunity for a photo. So if we could all sort of assemble up front here, that would be great.
(inaudible)
Be close.
Be close.
(inaudible)
Are you really farther?
(inaudible)
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 All right.
Thank you again to our honorees tonight. Have a good evening. All right, next we have a proclamation declaring April 2022 as National Sex Assault Awareness Month. I want to welcome Paul Graves, who's the Senior Deputy District Attorney for Contra Costa County and the President of the Board of Community Violence Solutions. He is here to receive the proclamation. So what we'll do as is tradition is the council members will take turns reading the par, each paragraph of the proclamation, then we will invite Paul to say a few words. We'll have public comment, and then council member comments, and then we will present the proclamation and take a picture. So if we could just start, Mike, maybe we start on your end and go this way?
Great. A proclamation declaring April 2022 as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas in California, there were 13,439 forcible rapes in 2020 and 283 forcible rapes reported in Contra Costa County in the same year, with an increasing number affecting adolescents and?
Whereas sexual assault affects every person of Contra Costa County as a victim, survivor, or as a family member, significant other, neighbor, or coworker as a victim, survivor, and?
Whereas many citizens of Contra Costa County are working to provide quality services and assistance to sexual assault survivors, and dedicated volunteers help staff 24-hour crisis hotlines respond to emergency calls and offer support, comfort, and advocacy during forensic exams, criminal proceedings, and throughout the healing process, and?
Whereas staff and volunteers of Community Violence Solutions and its Rape Crisis Center, Children's Interview Center, Prevention Department, Hope Therapy Services, and Anti-Trafficking Project programs in Contra Costa County are promoting education by offering training to schools, churches, and civic organizations, as well as medical, mental health, law enforcement, education, and criminal justice personnel regarding sexual assault issues, and?
Whereas it is vitally important that continued educational efforts to provide information about prevention and services for sexual assault be supported and enhanced, and?
Whereas it is critical to intensify public awareness of sexual assault, to educate people about the need for citizen involvement in efforts to reduce sexual violence, to increase support for agencies providing sexual assault services, and to increase awareness of the healing power of creative expression, and?
Whereas Community Violence Solutions requests public support and assistance as it continues to work towards a society where all women, children, and men can live in peace, free from violence, and exploration, exploitation.
Now therefore be it resolved that I, Renata Soss, Mayor of the Town of Moraga, along with my fellow council members, do hereby declare April 2022 as National Sex Assault Awareness Month in the Town of Moraga, and encourage all citizens to support service programs in the belief that all community members must be a part of the solution to end sexual violence. All right, Paul, would you like to share a few words with us?
Sure.
Thank you for coming tonight.
The microphone is on. I've never needed a microphone. Thank you so much for recognizing this month as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I am the supervisor of your Sexual Assault Unit here in Contra Costa County, and I do serve as the Board President for Community Violence Solutions. So I deal with this 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm so pleased to be here in Moraga. I can say Moraga has been very, very supportive of Community Violence Solutions over the years. For those of you that don't know, we do handle the rape crisis hotline. We send out advocates for any sexual assault examination at the hospital anytime of the day or night so that a victim can have a counselor with them. We also have the Children's Interview Center, where children who are victims of sexual assault can be interviewed in a more acceptable place by a trained forensic interviewer. They can color, they have animals, and it's a, it's a much safer place than having law enforcement train them. We also do have our wing of people that go out and educate in schools. That education is very, very important. I myself, through the office, have done similar educations, and to be honest with you, the first one ever was right here at Campolindo High School and was attended by the Moraga Police Department. I'm glad to see Chief Kings here. He has been a huge supporter of Community Violence Solutions and increasing sexual assault awareness throughout the community. I don't know if you're aware, but the Moraga Rotary has also taken Community Violence Solutions under their wing for this year as a nonprofit they're supporting, and they've helped us raise some funds. So I feel very at home here in Moraga and very pleased to be here. You know, Sexual Assault Awareness Month, as said in the proclamation, it's a time where we need to reflect on those survivors who had the courage to come forward and shed light on what's going on in our community and throughout our country. But it's also time to realize that there are many others that sit there in darkness and are afraid to come forward, and they're afraid to say what happened to them for fear of retribution, victim blaming, victim shaming, and we see it still to this day. So there is a need for communities like Moraga and all throughout the country and all throughout our county to get together and create an environment where people feel comfortable coming forward, where we have, we approach it from understanding and not from accusations, not from victim blaming, and give them a comfortable place to come forward. It's not about prosecution. It's about getting people the help and services that they need, and we do have those at Community Violence Solutions. We can help them, but they have to feel free to come forward. So thank you so much for recognizing us tonight, and let's continue to work together to have that society where people feel comfortable coming forward and we can help everybody in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Paul. Is there any public comment on this? All right. Oh, Chief King.
All right, I'm gonna be a member of the public for a moment. I want to thank Paul and the Community Violence Solutions Group because he just scratched the surface. The service that he, in particular, and the group provide to our community, I could probably sit here for three days and tell you about, you wouldn't like that much, but the reality is, is this, sexual assault is a, is a huge issue in our community. We don't hear about it a lot, but we have victims, we have silent victims, and, and I hope that anybody who might be out there listening right now understands that they have an advocate in the Moraga Police Department. We work closely with Community Violence Solutions to, to help our victims and help them heal and get through this, a terrible ordeal. And I'm just so thankful for Paul being here, and as he said, he has routinely done programs at Campolindo and at St. Mary's to help provide information to young women in our community, to help keep them safe and, and help to prevent them from being, becoming a victim. And I'm very thankful for him and, and him being here tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. All right, I will close public comments. Any council member comments? Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, this is such an important thing, and it can change lives, and that you folks are open to having the opportunity for people to understand that they have an outlet. I mean, it's just huge. It's just absolutely huge. So thank you so very, very much.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to express, you know, such unhappiness that, that there is this statistic, that this happens, and that my hope is, and I think this, we're getting there, for the victims, that the stigma has gone away. We've got to get the stigma to go away. The stigma cannot be allowed for the victims to induce them to be silent. And to Paul and everybody who works on this, it's uncomfortable subjects often, thank you very much.
Sona?
Thank you. Thank you for your advocacy and for raising awareness. In particular, thank you for calling out, you know, the importance of providing services and support for healing. It's, for many people, extremely hard to first come forward, to then be believed and be heard, and then to live and be supported. So I really appreciate calling, calling that out and recognizing the importance of bringing that at a community level. Thank you.
Thank you, Sona. Mike?
Yes, thank you. Actually, I'm a member of Moraga Rotary, and when we were looking at, we tried to pick a nonprofit of the year to focus, and your organization really jumped out. We've gotten to know you, remember the event we had over at the brewery, and the awareness, and I think the education of everybody in our club and in the whole town and obviously the county. So what you do is so important, and I'm gonna look forward to the day when we can read that we had no sexual assaults and no forcible rapes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And I just want to thank you for also focusing on the healing, the post-assault healing, because the assault itself is, has just incredible, horrible, traumatic implications. But sometimes the process of bringing someone to justice and in dealing with the repercussions with the family, with children, with, with spouses, it can be incredibly traumatic as well. And so the fact that you are doing a holistic approach to healing is, I think, so important and ever so grateful. So thank you for the good work that you're doing. Okay, shall we present the proclamation and take a photo if the council members will come forward?
(inaudible)
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 All right, thank you.
Next agenda item is Public Comments and Suggestions. This is time reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. The council cannot discuss or vote on non-agenda items, and public input will also be taken during each agenda item and the consent agenda. Comments are three minutes, and we'd appreciate a comment card so that we make sure that our records are correct on, on who spoke. So with that, I have a card from Ashley Coats.
I'm sorry, that was actually for an agenda item.
Ah, good point. Thank you. Yes, we are talking about housing, aren't we? Okay, my apologies, Ashley. Thank you. All right. Any, any other public comment on items not on the agenda? Yes?
I'll fill out the card in a minute.
No worries. We're not sticklers for process.
Thank you. My name's Dave Schneier, Moraga resident. I know most of you. Thanks for having in-person meetings again. Appreciate being able to see you and, and speak face to face. I'm here this evening again to request that the council do its job and agendize the noise ordinance issue that many of us have requested over and over and over. There's no downside. Your role here is to protect and to serve the citizens of Moraga. There's no cost involved in this issue. Let's get it put on the agenda. You can direct staff to do it. Let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. I will close public comment. Next item is adoption of the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Yes, Mike?
Six twenty-five.
All right. Any other items coming off? All right, could I have a motion for six one through six four, please?
Move for approval of the- Move for approval of the consent agenda. Items 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, as proposed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Mayor, Councilmember Onoda, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nobody? Okay, passes unanimously. All right, Mike, 6.5.
What is the criteria that we're going to use when we can decide to basically move off of the emergency? Just a refresher.
Yes, we are continuing to have this item so that our committees and commissions can continue to meet virtually, because not all of them have gone back into in-session meetings.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I checked, and I see that the state is still in the state of emergency. Does that have an impact on our releasing our state of emergency?
Yes, there's a benefit to the town to continue under the emergency order. Just in case in the future if something happens, we can continue to be covered, and if there's funding or other services available, that we'll have issued that.
So per se, we could remove the emergency prior to the state doing so?
Yes, but I would not recommend that.
Thank you.
And, Madam Mayor, if I might add?
Yes?
I would just say that I'm not aware of any city that's lifted its local proclamation of emergency. And in fact, I was on a call with other Contra Costa County city attorneys the other day, and we all reiterated that the proclamations remain in place, at least until we know what the state is going to do and what, how, you know, because COVID is still volatile, and there could be more waves, that most cities are leaving it in place.
Thank you.
All right. Are everyone's questions answered? Mike, you want to move approval?
Yes, I'd like to move consent 6.5 for approval.
I'd like to move consent item 6.5 for approval.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember McClure, second by Onoda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. On, we go to adoption of the meeting agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. The motion passes unanimously. All right, next, we have reports, and just before we get going, I would like to commend my colleagues for the pithiness of the recent reports, which have focused on matters that are of interest to the community and on things that we've been performing as council members. And I also want to thank council members who, in their reports, have been respectful and appreciative of efforts by staff and by our colleagues. So I just want to thank you all for that and look forward to that continuing. And with that, Town Manager.
Right. Good evening. I wanted to report out on the private events that have returned to the hacienda on March 25th. As you are aware, there are 25 or so events scheduled for March through June that were booked under the town's old contractor agreement. And while things went smoothly that first weekend, there was an event at the pavilion on April 1st, which resulted in multiple noise complaints. Staff in Wedgwood have been moving, have been working to move receptions and dancing from the pavilion to the hacienda, as we learned last year that noise travels and bounces around the pavilion. Unfortunately, not all hosts agreed to do so. So we do have some events where the receptions will continue at the pavilion, and we've notified the residents that at the beginning of May, when there's some events in May, we'll finalize what those dates are. But Wedgwood management is taking noise measurements to ensure that the noise does not exceed the thresholds in their lease agreement. The challenge is that each event has a separate DJ and a separate sound system, and so it's very hard to control the noise that occurs. Now, we were fortunate last weekend that our police chief was working graveyard both Friday and Saturday night, and he was out there with Wedgwood management and staff taking noise measurements. And he confirmed that the noise readings at the property line were about 75, or 57 throughout the evening, which is well below the noise thresholds in the agreement. And there are two noise thresholds in the agreement. First, there's a requirement that the noise level be below 75 decibels at the property line, and second, that the sustained noise level from the event inside a household with closed doors and windows not exceed 55 decibels during the day and 50 decibels at night, which is defined as one hour after sunset. So Wedgwood management's going to continue to monitor the events and work to keep the sustained noise levels below 65 at the property line, and residents with complaints that noise inside their home exceed the permitted level should call the Moraga Police Department dispatch number at 925-284-5010. And I really just want to ask for the community's patience as we honor the contracts that were entered into prior to Wedgwood taking over the events. On July 1st, Wedgwood weddings will be fully in control of events, and hopefully noise and peace will return to the neighborhood. But I do think that it's important that the community remember that the hacienda has been hosting events for more than 20 years, so there will continue to be some level of activity during the event season. I'd also like to welcome everybody to the hacienda open house on Thursday, May 12th, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. Wedgwood staff will be there to meet the community and provide tours of the facility, and we really look forward to really showcasing the improvements, which include the work on the new outdoor patio area. Lastly, I'd like to share that the activity guide was released today. Staff has been expanding the offerings of the summer day camps, given that we have this additional staff capacity in parks and rec. And I guess it's both fortunate and unfortunate that the camps are already 97% filled. So there's really high demand, and we can continue to expand our programs to meet the community needs. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Cynthia, again, on when the open house is at the hacienda?
It is Thursday, May 12th, from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, just, I'd like to just ask a question. When I, I hadn't been up to Mall Hall in a while, and, you know, beautiful up there, but I couldn't help but notice, and I started counting them, 12 large dead pine trees. So I just wanted to make sure that's on our list for fire abatement.
We are working on our abatement plan, and we're working regularly with MOFD. So I don't, I haven't seen the trees, so I can't address that, but I can look into that and get back to you, but I'm sure that they're aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, Sona.
Thank you. So since our last meeting, I have been digging into housing, like everybody else here, digging into housing, the housing element and opportunity sites in partnership with staff and community members. I attended the walking tour on March 25th led by staff at the REEM Center area. This was a very immersive and visual way to really understand the potential opportunities, and was really grateful to meet other community members there and hear their opinions and thoughts about the housing opportunity sites. And then just yesterday, attended a neighborhood discussion on the housing element and a demonstration of the Balancing Act tool hosted by some community members with the assistance of staff. I just wanted to say in sum that staff has been doing an excellent job of explaining these concepts. It's not easy to always grasp the RINA numbers, maps, and densities, but they've helped all of us become educated and informed, and importantly, have taken a lot of input from the community into the planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Sona. Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mine's very short. I went, along with Vice Mayor and Mayor, to the inauguration of Richard Plum, PhD, and he's the president of St. Mary's College. If you see him around, this is what he looks like. He's, I'm very, very excited about him being the president, because I feel that he is forward-looking, he's a leader, he comes from humble background, he's had challenges, and he gets it. So I think Moraga is in a fabulous place for the future, for the REEM Shopping Center and for, and the partnership with St. Mary's College. So three cheers, go Gales. End of report.
And if I may just footnote, he is living on campus with his wife. So he's totally part of that community. Yeah. Mike?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, go Gales. I second that. Yeah, I attended the closed session last week. I also attended the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting. They're making good progress and continue to work on the community fair and art walk, so was pleased to hear that. They're also working on the details for a second presentation to the Town Council, which I believe will be before the end of May. I heard from the executive director, she's very excited. They had a new, they purchased a new CRM program, so they have great customer information. They're working on business and nonprofit of the year and getting close on that announcement. And finally, they now have a dedicated phone number, so I'm really happy to hear that. I attended two CCTA meetings. One was on the strategy and options to achieve zero emissions, which is required to begin by 2029, and the other is attending my role on the MPL, MP and L meeting, Marketing Planning and Legislative Meeting. Number four, had a delightful time at the Town Hall hosted by Afshah and staff. I thought they really just did a fantastic job, very well attended. And Afshah said, you know, it was a little challenging at first, but people sort of got figuring out how to work the Balancing Act tool, and I think the overall trends were good. Now, this was only one meeting, but people seemed to want to put more units in REEM, and they did call out the Orchard Hill in the Moraga Center for less, and then they talked about parking. They said, be careful on what you do on parking, because there's still 17,000 people who don't live in our town centers, and they want to go shop, and they need a place to park. So just, you know, a sense of caution. But again, staff did a great job on that. And then, fire abatement, I'm hearing a lot of stories from residents of, well, Mike, we're doing our job, and it cost me $20,000. So I just want to be sympathetic to that, and the good news is, for that price tag, we are helping to save future lives, in my opinion. I'll also share one story where a neighbor said, his neighbor had 20 trees, large trees to take down. So he was going to save some money, so he was going to cut them down himself. And the next week, he broke his leg. So I just want to remind everybody that the fire chief has always said, hey, if you have a financial burden as you, you know, do your fire abatement, remove your trees, you know, we'll work with anybody. So, you know, I would caution the safety here and contact MOFD. End of report.
Thank you, Mike. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things that I'll chat about since our last regular meeting. I participated in a REEM Elementary School third grade civics event, and there were a number of community leaders, including myself and the mayor, who participated. Had groups of the third graders interviewing us and are presenting a little bit about what we do. Actually, the Town Manager also participated in that event. It was great fun, and kids were greatly engaged, and I think a goodly number of them are probably well prepared to ultimately become investigative reporters, you know, I think. The other thing I'll talk about, on the 31st, I attended League of California Cities Dinner. For those of you not familiar with the League, it's an organization that's been supporting California cities since 1898, and they're sort of a coordinating organization that is a glue that holds the cities together, knocks down silos, and also lobbies for the cities in Sacramento and informs our legislators in Sacramento. It was an excellent dinner that happens once a year, and I spent the time, besides listening, learning about some of the other towns and how they're spending their ARPA funds. And what I learned is, it's all over the board, from supporting residents to local businesses to infrastructure, wide range of means that they're using their ARPA funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, as the Vice Mayor said, some of us participated in this wonderful civics event at REEM for the third graders. And then I had the pleasure of then going to all the elementary schools the following week and spending the lunch hour at each of them. And there's nothing more refreshing than the candor and creativity of elementary-age kids, so I wanted to share some of the comments and questions that were asked during my visits. First, when I asked the kids whether they felt safe in Moraga, everyone said yes. I mean, it was like unanimous, all age groups. Second, I asked the kids to guess how much the mayor of Moraga made, and guesses ranged from $500 to $10 million. So when I shared that the mayor made $0, one practical and forward-thinking fourth grader asked, how do you pay for food and rent? So some of the ideas for improvements to Moraga's parks and facilities included more tire swings, that was by far the most frequently suggested improvement, Brianna, chocolate fountains, I don't know how we do that, better snacks, I don't know that we gave out snacks, and more bike lanes. And then when I asked what I could do to help, one third grader asked, could you please make sure that there are places to live that are not so expensive? Third grader. And then finally, on the occasion of college and career week at the schools, I asked if anyone knew what they wanted to do when they grew up. And so the most popular professions mentioned were, going from most mentioned to least often mentioned, first, professional athlete, second, pop star, third, engineer, firefighter, and police officer. Nobody said they wanted to be mayor. So that was the elementary school village. And finally, I wanted to acknowledge and wish a belated happy birthday to a 100-year-young Moraga resident, Sue Galinas, whose birthday was April 6th. Happy birthday, Sue. That's the end of my report. All right, next, we have public hearings. There are none. Next agenda item is ordinances, resolutions, requests for action. Item A is housing opportunity sites and rezoning. We are not taking action tonight, but we are being asked to provide feedback and direction to staff on rezoning proposals to meet state mandated housing targets. So the structure of the discussion will be, we will get the staff and consultant presentation, we'll do council member questions, we'll do public comment, and then we will do council discussion and feedback. So with that introduction, Afshah, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Happy to be here tonight and moving very quickly with this project. As you are aware, this, the state has a deadline and a mandate, and we need to submit an adopted housing plan by January 2023. So we were before you on March 2nd, and we were discussing housing opportunity sites, and we had an initial discussion at that time. And since then, we've had community meetings and community engagement. We've had a walking tour, we've held two community meetings, we've presented before the PTA group, Moraga School District PTA group. We have presented, we've had surveys submitted by St. Mary's, and then we've also had a very specific survey submitted by St. Mary's students. So all that input and all that feedback is helping us to inform our next steps, and that's where we are today. And so tonight, I'd like to introduce Barry Miller with Barry Miller Consultants, and we are going to get our PowerPoint started. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Hopefully you can hear me okay. It's really great to be here live and not on Zoom. And we have a presentation for you this evening that's going to walk through where we are at the housing element, some preliminary findings from the surveys we've at the housing element, some preliminary findings from the surveys we've been doing and the work we've been doing with the community. And then some decisions about the, some recommendations, I should say, about the opportunity sites and rezoning for the housing element. So I will be going through the slides as we do that. You can see here, we'll be talking about the results of the survey and then specific recommendations for Moraga Center initially and then Ream Center. And then we'll end with just an overview of our next steps. So for some context, this is part of, what we're doing tonight is part of a larger comprehensive advanced planning initiative. It includes all of the activities you see here on your screen. Right now, we're updating the 2023 to 2031 housing element, or I should say updating the housing element to move the time horizon to 2023 to 2031. That's an eight-year timeframe that every city, town and county in the Bay Area is doing right now. And as part of that process, we are rezoning key parcels of land, which we'll be talking about this evening. This is also part of a focused general plan update. So the housing element is one part of the town's general plan. There are land use, transportation, conservation, open space, safety, noise and other topic areas covered by the general plan that we'll be dealing with in phase two. We are going to be making some amendments to the other elements of the general plan as part of what we're doing now so that we have an internally consistent document when we're through. We're also including in this program, the rezoning of the Bollinger Canyon Study Area, which we'll be coming back to you and talking about at a future meeting. And then there's a program level environmental impact report that covers all of these actions that you see here on the screen. So additional context for the housing element, we've talked to you at length at previous meetings about the fact that there is a, an assignment given to the town, as there is with each jurisdiction in the state of California. And each community must demonstrate that it's doing its fair share to meet the region's housing needs. And that's not just a concept, that's an actual number. In our case, the number is 1,118 units. Basically, the state determined that the Bay Area region needs to plan for 441,000 units over the next eight years. And our share of that is a little over a quarter of 1%, which is 1,118 units. We can't just build single-family homes and say we've met our obligation. We have to build housing that is affordable or plan for housing that is affordable for a variety of incomes. And that means a variety of housing types, including multifamily housing. 673 units of that assignment needs to be affordable to low and moderate income households. And just as a benchmark, a low, or sorry, a moderate income household of four in Contra Costa County right now earns $150,000 or less a year. So we're talking about a lot of folks who work here in Moraga, a lot of folks who live in Moraga but probably couldn't afford to buy the home they live in today if they had to do it over again. It's a fairly broad range of, of housing types that we're being asked to provide to make housing more affordable. Part of this process is that we need to identify specific sites in the community that have the potential for housing to meet this need. And those sites must be zoned at certain densities in order to qualify as being eligible as housing opportunity sites. If we're going to count a site as eligible to be, as an affordable housing site, it needs to be zoned at for a density of at least 20 units per acre and ideally for a density of 24 units per acre so that there's some opportunity for something in that 20 to 24 range. We also are required by state law to include some extra sites, what they call a buffer. And this is because not every site we identify may actually get developed with housing. In fact, quite a few of them may not develop with housing. Some may be used for other activities. And so we need to actually plan for slightly more housing units than that 1,118. So as part of the housing element, we also have to develop policies and programs that respond to our housing needs. So this isn't just about meeting our fair share of the region's needs. This is all about, this is also about taking a hard look at our housing needs here in Moraga and planning and programming to meet those needs more effectively, the needs of our seniors, persons with disabilities and others in the community. I mentioned that we have to plan for a variety of housing types that serve a range of incomes. Part of this process is also taking a hard look at our zoning regulations and our development processes and procedures and our fees and seeing if we need to address constraints and obstacles that are causing housing to be built at a slower rate or making it more difficult to build housing in this community relative to others. We also have to demonstrate that we're affirmatively furthering fair housing. And that's a new requirement that just came into effect in 2017. The last time we did a housing element, we did not have this requirement. But it essentially says, we can't just draft this document and put it on a shelf. We must show the state that we're taking actions in the way that we do business to promote fair housing and more equitable housing. And we have to engage all segments of the community in this process. And I think we're making a very good faith effort to do this. I want to point out that the last housing element that was adopted in 2015, there was one community workshop and six people attended. And that was the community engagement program that was documented. We've had over 1,000 people take part in our activities to this point. We've probably engaged about 10% of the population of Moraga so far in this process and we've got a ways to go. So that's a segue into the housing survey that we're going to talk to you a little bit about. I'm not going to go into great detail on the survey because we have a lot of other things to cover. I do want to point out that we're going to be preparing a detailed survey report with the findings and we'll be providing that as an appendix to the housing element. But we started the survey on February 2nd. It's an online survey, which we made available in English, Spanish and Chinese. We provided paper copies for those who might not have computers. And as of April 15th, we had 978 responses. I updated that this afternoon. We're closing in on 1,000. I want to say to anyone who's watching this at home, if you haven't taken the survey, we only need eight more to get to 1,000 and we'd love to say that we made it. Because this is going to be live for two more days. We do have to close down the survey to get on with the business of writing the housing element. 84% of the folks who took the survey live in Moraga. The 16% who are not residents are folks who work in Moraga. Want to point out that we also encouraged people who work here but don't live here to take the survey as well. And we have that information so that we can look, we can kind of parse out when we look at the survey results and responses, who, which, what residents said and what non-residents said. And that's true of any of these subgroups that I'm going to walk through here. 87% of the respondents were homeowners. So in Moraga as a whole, about 82% of the population are homeowners. So we did get a pretty good response. As our renters were a little bit underrepresented, but with more than 130 renters responding, we can still say we've got a good sample and we understand what some of the issues are that are being raised. We got a good diversity of age groups. Initially, when we launched the survey, I think in the first four or five days, we were, over 50% of our respondents were over 65 and we started to get a little nervous. And thank you, Afshah, for doing some fantastic outreach to many organizations and civic groups in the community so that we got a more balanced perspective. The under 34s are still a little bit underrepresented. They represent more than 7% of our community, obviously. But we do have a good balance of our middle adult population. We also have a good cross-section of different race and ethnic groups in the city. The, again, the Latino population is somewhat underrepresented in the survey, but the white, Asian and multi and other are fairly well represented in the survey, relative to the city as a whole, to the town as a whole. Length of residency, you can see here that about 40% of our respondents have lived in Moraga for more than 20 years. But that also means that 60% have lived in Moraga for less than 20 years and we're interested in hearing what they have to say as well. And about 78% of our respondents lived in single-family homes. So again, our, the number of folks who live in apartments and condos is more than 7% of our community. So we're a little underrepresented there, but we still have a good sampling from all of the different housing types in the community. So when we asked people, were they satisfied with their current housing? In other words, how well does your current housing meet your needs? 82% of our respondents said that they were satisfied. 14% said their housing situation could be better and 4% were not satisfied. We asked those folks who weren't in that 82% why their housing wasn't completely satisfactory. And you can see the, some of the answers here. Common problems, we have about 20% of our community that indicated they were spending more than 50% of their income. I should say 20% of those who were not satisfied, who indicated that they were spending more than half of their income on housing. Some who were wishing they were living in larger units or in units with yards and so forth. When we asked what type of affordable housing the town should encourage, the first choice was townhomes and then independent living for seniors, apartments for families and so on. And again, I'm going through this quickly because we're wanting to get to some fairly important items later on, but we're, all of this information will be available on the website and in an appendix. This is just asking about level of concern, about different housing issues and impacts of adding more housing. I think it's important to point out, this is consistent from what we're hearing from the council and the commission and at community meetings. Traffic and congestion and evacuation in an emergency specifically related to wildfire are the greatest concerns that we're hearing related to adding housing. Just want to take a moment to talk about the Balancing Act. I think we just extended that from April 23rd to April 29th. But this is a program that the town is using to gauge public opinion on where housing should be located within the town. And it's an online app that folks can use at home. If you go to makemoragahome.org, you can do this yourself. We have, as was mentioned, had a couple of workshops and a walking tour to help folks understand how to use the Balancing Act tool. Essentially, we're asking people to allocate 800 units of housing around different areas of Moraga, specifically at the Ream Center and at Moraga Center. And this has been live since March 7th. We've had, this has 50 maps. I think it's up to about 60 by now. And really, one of the things that this does is it helps raise awareness of the housing element and really the challenge that faces the town in finding space for more housing than it has seen in a very long time. So just in terms of what we're seeing through the Balancing Act program, more residents are placing housing in the Ream area than in the Moraga Center area than we had originally expected. We have also more, more housing placed in Area E on this map. You can, sorry, less housing placed in Area E on this map than we had originally anticipated. And more housing in Area G, which is the Moraga Ranch, and less housing in Area H. So we're trying to take the input that we're getting from the community and incorporate it into the recommendations you'll be hearing this evening, which I'm going to move into now. So a couple of points, just some ground rules and background. We're going to walk you through housing opportunity sites now, but it's important to keep these things in mind, which is first of all, the decision to develop a property is entirely up to the property owner. The town of Moraga is not in the business of building housing and we are not going out and turning shovels to build, to build housing as part of this process. What we're doing is creating zoning, which will enable property owners, nonprofits, the private sector and so on, to build housing on these sites. Also, the designation of a site as being appropriate for lower income housing does not mean that the owner can't build market rate housing or above moderate income housing. Again, that is up to the property owner. What we're identifying is that these sites meet the state criteria for a site that could support lower income housing. Next, most of these zoning changes that we're going to be talking about don't just apply to individual properties, they apply to districts. So when we're making a housing opportunity site suitable, we're often changing the zoning on multiple properties. We're really only talking about those properties that we think have the greatest likelihood and present the greatest opportunity for housing because either they're vacant or there's a property owner who has expressed interest in doing development or there's an underutilized use, like an, an empty gas station or a vacant building and so forth. And also the, finally, I want to emphasize that housing can be built on other sites in each district. So just because you're not identified as a housing opportunity site does not mean that you're precluded from building. So what we're going to do now is walk through a series of slides with some specific recommendations and we'll be able to answer questions on these at the end. So we're starting in the Moraga Center area. There is an area on the west side of the creek that is zoned R20. We talked about this at our last meeting. It's zoned into two different areas. One is R20B and that's about 12 acres. And the other is R20A and that's about six acres. We're recommending increasing the maximum allowable number of dwelling units per acre to 24, from 20 units per acre to 24 units per acre only on that R20A 6.1 acre parcel. And that's a change from what we brought to you last time. Last time, we were talking about creating 24 units per acre on both of these parcels. But we've identified some other opportunities and also have heard pretty loud and clear from the community, they'd prefer not to see increased density above and beyond what the Moraga Center specific plan already proposes, which is 20 units per acre on that R20B site. So we're proposing keeping that R20B property as 20 units per acre. It could still develop with multifamily housing, but more likely at townhome densities than at apartment densities. Also want to point out, and this is a new recommendation that is not in the staff report, there is another piece of property that is zoned R20B. There's an application that's been under consideration for this site. And we are also recommending that the allowable density be increased on that site to 20, from 20 to 24 units per acre. That site is completely flat and closer to the services in the shopping center adjacent to assisted living and has other amenities and features that make it more suitable than the hillside for that 20 to 24 unit per acre. So that is part of the recommendation. Moving on, again, within the Moraga Center area, the outline that you see here in red is the mixed office residential zoning district. This zoning district was created when you adopted the Moraga Center specific plan zoning in 2020. And what we're recommending is that the zoning, the maximum allowable density in this district be increased from 20 units per acre to 24 units per acre. Just to clarify, housing is already permitted in this zone, up to 20 units per acre. But in order to count properties as opportunity sites, we're recommending that the rezone be to 24 units per acre. And that's consistent with what we talked about at the March 2nd meeting. We're further recommending that the site that's shown here in yellow be identified as a housing opportunity site. The property owner is interested in developing housing on that property and that would yield 56 units at a, what we're calling a realistic density. There are other sites in this area that could also be considered as housing opportunity sites. We've highlighted those here, the school district property and the, the church property. We're not listing those as housing opportunity sites at this time, but they do meet the standards that are set by the state insofar as that they have large areas of parking and undeveloped land and space with no buildings and relatively low improvement values. Those sites would not be listed specifically as housing opportunity sites. So moving into the Moraga Center MCSP Mixed Retail Residential Zone, this is at the north end of School Street, just behind the Safeway. And again, this is something we talked about with you at the March 2nd meeting. There are two large properties on either side of School Street and the current zoning does allow housing on these sites, up to 20 units per acre. We're proposing increasing that to 24 units per acre so that these can be counted, both as housing opportunity sites with a potential yield of 253 units. That's a fairly big chunk of the city's housing allocation, but these sites have long been looked at as an opportunity area, both for housing and for mixed use development with housing above retail uses or above other commercial uses. And again, much of this is flat land. It's close to existing commercial uses and lends itself to that type of development. We are proposing a policy question here for the council related to the Moraga Ranch overlay. This is a zoning overlay that applies to the historic ranch properties that are on the west side of School Street, on both sides of Moraga Way. Current zoning. Current zoning does not allow housing on this site, and at the last council meeting, I think the preference was to continue to keep the zoning as is, but we have heard from the community during our Balancing Act exercise and our workshops that there is some interest in potentially allowing housing here. You could consider allowing housing on this property, but not necessarily calling it out as an opportunity site in the housing element, or you could consider allowing housing here through transfer of development rights from another parcel or other properties in other parts of Moraga. And that's a concept we're going to be talking about more at the May 4th meeting. Okay, moving on, wanted to go over one boundary change. So one of the things I'll say is that the, so far, everything we've talked about does not involve changing the zoning map, it's really changing what the districts allow. This is one change to the zoning map that we are going to recommend to you, and I'll highlight it now. It is the area that's in, inside that blue line that just came on the map. It's four parcels that are currently zoned MCSP Commercial, which does not allow for housing. So if you're in the Montessori School or the, the two office buildings on Viator Drive, or the vacant lot at the corner of Moraga Way and Viator, those parcels don't currently allow housing, but they're adjacent to the, the Office Residential Zone, and the vacant site in particular is a good opportunity for a smaller housing development there. By bringing those sites in and changing that zoning boundary, we would create the opportunity for the north half of that block to be counted as a housing opportunity site, which could support 15 units. It's not a significant number of units, but it is a site because of the vacancy on the eastern part of the property, that's an opportunity that I think we should, we should look at. Moving on, the Community Commercial Zone, which is almost all of the Moraga Shopping Center and the Planned Development District that's up on Moraga Road opposite Commons Park. We're not proposing any changes in these two districts at this point in time. Housing is not currently permitted in the Community Commercial Zone, and per the council's discussion at the March 2nd meeting, the proposal is to continue that right now. Again, I mentioned, we're going to talk about density transfers, which potentially could allow some housing in this area if density is transferred from another part of the town, but that'll come up at the May 4th meeting. No zoning changes are proposed at this time. So this is what you're left with, if you add all those zoning together, zoning changes together. If I had a pointer, I'd be highlighting where, where those areas were on the map. We can come back to this map at the end of the presentation, but it's kind of a summary of, of what's proposed here. I'm going to move on to the REEM Center. So again, this is the second commercial district in the town, and under the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements, we cannot put all of our housing opportunities in the Moraga Center. We have to distribute them geographically in other parts of the town. REEM is the best place to do that, given that it is commercial, it's developed, it's closer to some of the access routes out of Moraga, and it's already developed. And in some cases, there are some vacancies and some opportunities for more productive use of the sites, and also some significant landowner interest in residential development on some of these properties. So to, again, remind you, the current zoning in this area, which is, as you can see here, three different districts, and none of these zones allow housing. So the current zoning is, does not indicate housing is even a conditionally permitted use in these zones. So we're left with a few questions, which we talked a little bit about at March 2nd. Should we allow housing in this entire area, or should we be more strategic and limit the footprint of where we're going to allow housing? Obviously, if you allow housing on all properties in this area, you're going to maximize your flexibility and your opportunities, but you may end up with more units than you want or that you're ready for. Retaining commercial-only zoning in part of the area is similar to what we did at the MCSP, where we kept the Moraga Center as a commercial-only area. And we think the greatest potential for residential uses is actually pretty close to where we're sitting right now, mostly across the street on the south side of REEM Boulevard. So walking, again, walking through these different areas, we have the Community Commercial, and we're proposing a partial rezoning of this area so that basically everything from the Dollar Tree store south stays Community Commercial. The northern part of the shopping center and the St. Mary's property on the north side of REEM Boulevard in the 24-hour would be in a new zone that allows commercial and residential up to 24 units per acre. So this is similar to the zoning that, that we've used in the MCSP area on the site where we would like to see future development. In this case, it's redevelopment of commercially-developed properties. And the other thing I want to point out here is that the REEM Theater and the gas stations would also retain the Community Commercial zoning, so we're not proposing that they be included in this new Mixed Commercial Residential Zone. What this does is it allows us to identify several housing opportunity sites, they just came on the screen in yellow. The REEM Shopping Center is, much of that is identified as a housing opportunity site, and the St. Mary's property, which is about three and a half acres on the north side of REEM Boulevard, is identified as a housing opportunity site. And that accommodates about 210 units in that, in those yellow areas. Moving to the Suburban Office Zone, and this is right where we are now, and actually across the street from where we are now, the number of properties here that have expressed interest in developing with housing is shown here. We've had inquiries from 346 REEM, from the former Orion Academy, and from the vacant site next to the theater for housing opportunity, for the, looking at the possibility of housing on these properties. What we're proposing here is that the zoning allow up to 24 units per acre of residential, and that the zoning district be renamed Mixed Office and Residential, which is similar, again, to what's been done at the MCSP area, where we have both office and housing permitted within that boundary. And that's about 93 units of housing. On the Limited Commercial Zone, this is the east side of Moraga Road. The 7-Eleven is at the bottom of the screen, kind of in the center, and the self-storage is kind of up, up there at the top, the Arco Station. We would not be changing the zoning regulations, so housing would not be permitted in this area. However, we are proposing a zone change. The southern area of the zone, which is below Lucas, south of Lucas Drive, would be rezoned to that same Mixed Commercial Residential category that applies to the upper part of the REEM Shopping Center, and it would be re-designated to allow 24 units per acre. We have one housing opportunity site on that vacant land, and that would allow up to 28 units on that property. So again, here's a summary map of the REEM Center with the new zoning in place. You can see here, everything in the purple and everything in the blue would be zoned in a way that allows housing. Everything in the orange and everything in the red is zoned in a way that's commercial only. I think we, we took the council's feedback from the last meeting and the public's feedback. Our initial proposal was to rezone all of this to allow multifamily residential. We are pulling back from that a little bit so that we maintain some commercial-only zoning here and limit the number of sites that could potentially be developed to closer to what is needed. So this is a summary table, and it does show you that we are creating the capacity for 628 units in the Moraga Center. That includes 206 moderate-income units, and the remainder is potentially affordable for low and very low. In the REEM Center, 331 units, all of that would be potentially affordable to low and very low. I do want to point out that the zoning changes in the Moraga Center are less significant in many respects because you're already allowing 20 units per acre, so it's basically the increment of going from 20 to 24, which is a net increase of about 85 units throughout that whole area, whereas in REEM, it's completely, it's going from zero to, to 331. So basically, you can't build any housing under current zoning in the REEM Center, and so we're creating the opportunity for 331 units, whereas in the Moraga Center, it's an incremental increase above what's currently permitted of about 80 units. So where we go from here is based on the council direction. We are drafting the housing element right now, and we are needing to finalize this list of opportunity sites so that we can move towards a draft housing element, which we'll be bringing back to you in just a few months. We're also starting work on the EIR for the project, and again, it's important to understand where these sites are and how many units they will yield, because we're about to do a full analysis of the impact of this additional increment of housing on our hydrology and geology and our roads and our water system and our fire hazards, and all of those technical analyses need to begin soon so that we can bring you an EIR by the end of the year that you can certify when the housing element actually gets adopted in January. The other thing is that we're, we are going to need to draft zoning regulations, so it's not just a matter of saying we're rezoning these areas, we actually have to write the ordinances and the text and the standards that will apply to these areas and make sure that they're sufficient. So in order to give, provide enough lead time to do that, we actually need this direction at this point in time so that we know we're headed in the right direction with all of those other tasks. So I mentioned the May 4th meeting, we'll be coming back to you to talk about a couple of subjects we've, we've briefly introduced. Inclusionary zoning, this is a town policy or ordinance, which would require that new development sets aside a certain percentage of units as affordable, usually to low or moderate-income households. Density bonuses, we would like to talk to you about the fact that projects are eligible for density bonuses when they include affordable units, which could result in densities that are higher than the 24 units per acre that we've talked about tonight. That's current state law, it's not a new, new policy that we're proposing, but if you use inclusionary zoning, you're more likely to see more projects, including affordable units, that would become eligible for those density bonuses. So again, we'll be talking about that more at the May 4th meeting. Density transfers, which is allowing density to be moved from a part of the town to another part of the town to achieve some other goals that the, the town may have. We're also going to talk about parking standards, and then our height and floor area ratio standards. So there's a lot of additional items. It's a lot of information, I recognize that, and we thank you for your patience tonight. We're going to close with just a summary of all of the recommendations. I'm not going to read these individually, these are really for council discussion, but you can see here, six questions for the Moraga Center area related to the changes that we've gone over, along with this additional question about the Moraga Ranch overlay and whether housing should be allowed there. And then four questions for the REEM Center area, essentially asking for concurrence with the, what's just been laid out in the presentation. And that concludes the presentation. I'm now happy to take questions and then look forward to public comment and discussion. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Barry. Council member questions. Mike.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Mayor, I have a few, so I think I'll just do two or three and then break, let others ask questions, and if I can come back.
Sounds like a good cadence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very, very much. You've been very helpful in this whole process. Just a clarification on page four of your presentation, which was also in the staff report. Just trying to understand two statements that seem to be different. If you go to slide four of your presentation.
Okay, I think I'm going to need to zoom up this way.
Just so everybody could see.
That didn't work. There we go.
There we go. The, the second bullet from the bottom, so, and I just didn't understand, it said zoning must allow for at least 20 units per acre for sites to be eligible. This is for low. And then per N, 24 DUA or more is recommended, so that sounds like two contradictory things. How do I interpret that?
That's a, it's a great question, and I agree, it's a, it's a confusing concept. It used to be 20 units per acre was the, I mean, it's, it's the legal requirement, but the state, what the state has said is it's the floor, not the ceiling. Currently in Moraga, it's the ceiling. So we can't say that development must be at least 20 units per acre and can't be any more than 20 units per acre. In other words, the maximum and the minimum can't be the same. They want a range. And so what other cities are doing, who are in this situation, is they're saying, okay, the top of the range is 24. So then we've gone over, and then there's a little more flexibility, we've got, you know, you can build up to 24 units per acre. And so in my review, I tried to get, get a sense of what other communities are doing around this. It does seem like most are using 24 units per acre.
Okay, but it's, it's a range, and we could go either end of the range as long as we have a range.
Yeah, you can go lower, I mean, it's, well, the, the range effectively is 16 to 24, and 20 is right in the middle.
Oh, okay. That's very helpful to know. Then on slide 20, and we, we've heard a lot of comments about the Orchard Hill, and there's several pieces to that, so I'm just trying to refresh my memory from the Moraga Center Plan and what we're actually proposing here. That's actually the exhibit I was looking for in the staff report.
Okay.
So just, can we refresh our memory? So, again, a very visible Orchard Hill, right? And we're coming in from Moraga Way. So that first sort of light color there, that's, and I'm trying to read this, it's R3, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, so at that point, very low density. Then we go up the hill, and it's like a, a brownish color, and that's R12.
Right.
Okay, good. And then we have now, and I think at this point, we're pretty close to the peak of that hill. If I can look at the topography lines here, and please let me know as we go along. So then we hit this darker brown with the horizontal line. So which, which one is that?
So that's R20B.
That's R20B.
Right, which allows 20 units per acre and no changes proposed to that zone.
Right, right, okay. And then the darker brown next to that sort of L shape, and what is that?
That's R, that will be R24, basically. That's where we're proposing the increase from 20 to 24 units per acre.
Okay, all right, that, that was very helpful.
Smaller site, yeah.
Yeah, that picture was very helpful, thank you. And sometime, for future reference, yeah, it looks like, I'd love to see the crest of the hill a little bit more in the topography because it's visible from Moraga Road and Moraga Way. So anyway, thank you. And then my last question, and I'm going to break, is on fire hazards. So we know that the, the REEM Center that you showed us, the retail center, the housing sites, those are currently, from Chief Whitaker, identified on the fire map as high fire hazards. And he recently did an update, and he increased that to a very high fire hazard, though has not submitted that to the board. But that's his current thinking, and then we have the Moraga Center, which is neither high nor very high. So I'm just wondering about, we look at these housing opportunity sites, and, you know, putting those sites in what, you know, is a very high fire hazard, you know, what, what was your thinking on that? Is that an element that you considered, and then we have evacuation issues, et cetera?
Yeah, certainly, the decision to put the housing on the flat, open areas is actually to avoid the very high fire hazard severity zone maps, and we're going with the state CAL FIRE maps at this point. So we haven't been, I haven't been made aware that the actual shopping center buildings would be in the very high.
Yeah, they are now. They are, according to Chief Whitaker. That's his assessment, because the CAL FIRE maps go back to '07, different methodology, and he said, he was presenting to the council, hey, it's been a while, I think we need to get an updated view of the risk. And it includes everything in the center right to Moraga Road. So that's just, you know, a bit of a concern, so you weren't aware of that.
Well, yeah, I would want to see the maps just to confirm that it's both sides of Moraga Road. We're limiting to the west side, not going to the east at all.
And since that's his current thinking, might it be a good follow-up maybe for Town Manager to have a conversation with probably Chief Whitaker and Chief King in terms of, hey, if this is your current view now of the fire hazard, very high, and we're proposing housing sites in there, you know, what, if anything, what conditions, building material, vaca, you know, what, what else should we consider in our housing element? I'm wondering if that would be a good idea as a follow-up.
Yes, that's not reflected in the CAL FIRE map at this time.
Pardon me?
So I'm looking at the CAL FIRE map, and at this point in time... So I'm looking at the CAL FIRE map, and at this point in time, the Moraga Center is in low, and portions of Ream are in the yellow. Is that moderate?
Yeah.
And then portions are in orange, which is high, but none are in very high. So those are the, those are the current maps.
Right, but Chief Whitaker came in and he said, based upon my assessment, all of Ream is a very high fire hazard. And since he presented that to the council and staff, I think that would be great to have, you know, that's his current view. So I think it'd be great to just have a conversation, hey, this is where we're thinking of building housing.
Yes. So we can't put all the housing in the Moraga Center. It needs to be spread throughout the community. And we've been told and directed to place the, some of the housing in Ream Center. And we've heard from the community, and the community has actually asked to put even more of the housing in the Ream Center than we're recommending. So that's what this recommendation reflects.
Are you done with your questions, Mike?
Pardon me?
Are you done with your question? Are you asking a question or you making a statement?
No, I was asking a question, if that's something we could follow up with the chief on.
I think that's, I mean, if we want to provide direction to staff, we need to do that as a council.
I understand. I was just wondering if that's an opportunity. But I'll pause, I got an answer to my question, so I will pause now on my questions.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've got several questions. I hope it won't take too long. So my first question is, what does it mean to be an opportunity? Okay, now, thank you. What does it mean to be an opportunity area? And are all areas opportunity areas, or what signifies an opportunity area?
Sure. So they're referred to as opportunity sites because they're parcels, they're individual parcels of land that meet certain criteria that the state has given us. And basically, they meet certain metrics that make them well-suited for housing. So they're larger than a half an acre, they're smaller than 10 acres, they're relatively flat, they are zoned to allow 20 units per acre, they have low improvement values or they're vacant, low assessed improvement values or they're vacant. They have low, if they're not vacant, there's a low floor area ratio. In other words, the building on the site is small or of low value. So we're looking for sites, individual properties that have, that meet, you know, check all those boxes and meet all those criteria. Those are what we call housing opportunity sites. And that's all that they are. They don't, it doesn't mean that they have to be developed.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. Another thing, it says the town must include a buffer of extra sites in case some of the sites become unavailable. How many are we considering that we need to have?
It's usually about 20%. The state recommends 15 to 30% above whatever your REAM is. So our REAM is 1,118.
Yes.
So it's 15 to 30% above that number is your buffer.
Okay, so what would that be? Can you do the math for me?
About 400 units.
400 units. So we're required to have 400 units above 1,100 and whatever?
Well, they give you some discretion when they say 15% to 30%. So it doesn't have to be 400. I mean, it can be a little less than 400. But they, what they want is you to go as high as you can.
And we want to, I would imagine, go as low as you can.
There is, well, the benefit to a higher buffer is that if you have a very low buffer and somebody comes in and says, I want to build a retail store on this housing opportunity site, then you have to, before you can let them do that, you have to first check all of your other sites and make sure you still have enough capacity left to meet whatever your assignment was. And if you start to chip away all of your sites because they begin to get committed to other purposes, and you find yourself with no more sites or not enough to meet your number, then you have to start rezoning more land.
Would it be fair to say that in Moraga, that's unlikely?
It, well, we don't, we don't know whether it's likely or not. Part of what we're trying to do is create conditions that make it less likely.
Okay, okay, thank you.
May I add one thing, though? I believe that we're looking for a goal of about 20% buffer, right? So that's, that's what we're working under.
So 20% of the 1,100?
Yes.
Okay. One other question. Can you explain what the difference is between mixed office residential and mixed commercial residential?
Sure. Yeah, I think office is more focused and more specific. So the buildings across the street would be mixed office residential. The commercial would be broader. It would allow, it would just recognize that there's a wider range of uses there. There's retail, there's restaurants, there's automotive, there, we would have to cast a pretty big net to take in all of the uses that are in the existing Ream Center. So it's all of the uses that are allowed in the Ream Center now, plus residential.
Okay, okay. Are, you know, and I'm sorry, Afshon explained or answered this, but I can't remember what the answer is. So please forgive me. Are hotels in both of those sections? Or is it just in the commercial residential?
So in the MCSP, hotels are allowed in both the retail residential and the commercial, and they're permitted.
How about in Ream?
Ream is currently commercial only. I would have to look that up.
Okay, that's okay. That's okay. That, of course you are.
I would also say that's a decision that
Give us a minute.
... made through the new zoning.
Okay. Okay, and one other question, and I know that this is coming up, but I'm wondering if we're putting the horse before the cart, which is a fun saying for me, is should the inclusionary zone be talked about now instead of later on the May 4? Because it sounds like that could add a lot of, a lot of residential that, that we would already kind of be, I mean, we might want to do less residential if we know that the inclusionary could, could double that number?
The problem is that the state doesn't recognize the potential new units that you can get through density bonuses if you have inclusionary. So if you have inclusionary zoning, the developer can add more units because they're basically setting some aside as affordable. But the state will not count, let you count those additional units when it determines if you're doing your fair share. You can only count what they call the realistic capacity under zoning. So we're not able to take that into consideration. I mean, it's a good policy question, but it wouldn't really affect whether you leave a site on or off the list.
Okay, so can you explain that kind of in some other words? So if you, let's say you have a site that can have, let's say, 50 units, and it, then explain how inclusionary would affect that.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
So if you have 50, and it may be different if they're rental units or for sale units. But let's say they're rental units, and you have a requirement that 20% of all of the units are affordable to low and very low income households. So that 50 units would need to set aside 10 units, 20% at below market rents. And those units would be marketed and managed for persons earning income that qualified in those groups. But the developer of that project is then entitled to a density bonus if they want to apply for that, which often they do.
Yes.
Which allows them to build more units since they're offering a certain number at a lower price. They, it helps them recover that loss. And the percentage of additional units that they can add is fixed by state law, so.
They would have 60 units instead of 50, is that right? If that's
It would be, it would probably be more than 60. I mean, it would probably be more than 10 additional units. Usually the density bonuses are 20, 30, 40%.
Wow, okay. And, and so if you have the zone, that area figured out for 50, and let's say you have the 40-foot setback and you have it three, three stories, what they would be able to do, if I'm thinking correctly, is either change the setbacks or give more, more height?
Yeah, they can request what are called concessions and waivers from the standards and apply, and basically say they need more height or reduce setbacks in order to make their project work.
So would the town have any flexibility in directing them into which way they would have that? Or do we not?
You have very little flexibility in that. It's mostly state law in that case.
Okay. Thank you so much. This has really been helpful. I hope I didn't take too much time. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Yes.
Okay, so I just, I want to add one thing, and that is the amount of density bonus is based on the depth of affordability. So that's one thing to consider. And the other thing, in answer to your question regarding a hotel at the Ream Center, that's a conditionally permitted use.
It's a what?
Conditionally permitted use.
Okay, great. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Sona?
Thank you. My questions are really focused on slide 23, mostly just because, thank you, mostly because I really want to understand slide 23 more, specifically the recommendation, if you could dig into that more about maybe just naming a few top pros and cons of retaining the community commercial zoning as is.
Retaining the community commercial zoning as is versus allowing residential uses in that southern half of the shopping center and on the other, the theater property and the gas stations. I think the decision to keep, to create two zones there is just the quantity of land that could be available for housing and the unintended consequences of getting many more units than the town is wanting to see at this point in time. You could, for example, retain that for 2031 when you have to do another housing element and at that point need a site, and there it is. So it's really, in a way, a land bank in that, if you look at it in that, in that regard. You know, on the other hand, if the goal of this is to create as many opportunities as possible, it makes sense to zone the whole thing as, to allow residential. So it's really, it's, it's that balancing act, literally.
Thank you. That's all for right now.
And maybe I can also add that by retaining the community commercial zoning, we retain a hopefully, you know, vibrant retail area in that part of town. And don't just give it all over to residential.
May I just add, there's an important piece that we wanted to explain, which is explained in the staff report. We have the Housing Accountability Act. So once you zone that to allow for residential, you cannot go back.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Several questions, maybe I'll ask a couple of them and then do as Mike is doing and cycle. On slide 13, if we can pull that up quickly. Okay, the, in the Orchard Hill, we've got this R20B and R20A, which are both 20 per acre zoning. One proposed, currently, one proposed to be increased to 24 per acre. And, and this is what was called Area 5 in the original MCSP, together. And in the text, in the report, it talks about consideration of both being zoned 24 per acre, but the reasoning against such being that HCD or Housing Community Development Department counseling against doing that because of putting too many, you know, affordable units in one area, had a 10-acre criteria. How hard of a requirement is that from HCD? Is it sort of like a soft recommendation, or is it really pretty hard?
What they're going to ask if we list the larger site as a housing opportunity site for low and very low is show us where in Contra Costa County, there's another development that's 10 acres or larger that has of low, lower income units. And in fact, most of the developments, the affordable developments in the county are on much smaller sites than 10 acres. So we would be hard-pressed to demonstrate that that's a viable site for, for lower income.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a definite, but it's, you'd be fighting an uphill battle.
Right. It's, it's a soft rule in that they, they will accept sites larger than 10 acres if the jurisdiction can demonstrate that they're realistic based on other projects.
Or maybe that's your only, only area.
Right, or if that was the only opportunity.
Extenuating circumstances. Okay, good. Thank you. On slide 19, and I, I was understood that that the former site of the Moraga Nursery was in a potential residential area, and it shows it here in community commercial that's not proposed for redistricting or rezoning, excuse me. How was, how was it considered, you know, that barren site there where the nursery is? How is it taken into consideration in terms of deciding not to rezone or allow that, that piece to be zoned for housing? Seems to me it'd be a ripe, ripe opportunity.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent point. I mean, it would be possible to redraw the zoning boundary of that retail residential area that's immediately west of there to include the nursery site. The only issue is we've already got a pretty large concentration of units right next door. We've got, I think, 250 units on those two sites on both sides of School Street. So we would be starting to look at a pretty heavy concentration of housing all in, all in one location.
Have we gotten input from the owner on that?
Not specifically on the nursery.
All right, okay. On slide 26, and this will be my last question, at least at this point. And this is a favorite subject of mine because, I mean, I've been, we've been playing with challenges at Ream Shopping Center since I was on the DRB, first on the DRB in the early 90s. And the roadblock we always hit towards rezoning this for, you know, mixed commercial residential, I guess, was that it's, you got six, at the time, it was six-plus owners. I don't know how many owners there are at Ream at this point. You know, in this plan, to what degree have you gotten owner input of that, that mix of owners? And, you know, can you get the herd of cats to, to, to be aligned?
So since we had the May 2 meeting, we have been reaching out to property owners. Prior to the May 2 meeting, we sent letters, but then we've also had phone calls. And we, March 2, we've had phone calls and we've been engaged with them. And there is strong interest in redeveloping that site.
From multiple owners, not just the U.S. Realty Partners?
Yes.
Good. I congratulate you.
Thank you, Steve. Mike?
You had some follow-up?
Yes, I did. Thank you. Steve, by the way, Steve, thank you for asking about that nursery on the commercial site. So that's been answered. I did want to probe just a little deeper on something else Steve mentioned, which I had on my list. So the, the 20B, and I guess the, the idea here is the change. So we, we started with 20 DUA from the original Moraga Center plan. March 2, staff recommends 24 DUA, and then we went to 20. And there's two references here, which is community input, Sidless, okay? And then you talked about the HCD guideline. So two questions here. Could you talk more about the community input? What are you specifically referring to? Did that come from one meeting, one group, a few people? And then the other thing on the HCD guideline, was there any change from March 2? Or, you know, because again, I'm trying to figure, why did we go from 24 to 20?
Sure, sure. It's primarily the community input more than the HCD guidelines. I think we, we're looking at the HCD guidelines even when we made the initial recommendation to increase. What we heard, I think, both at the workshops, certainly on the walking tour and in the individual submittals of Balancing Act by the public, we were getting numbers on that site that were half of, of the numbers that, I mean, 50% of the numbers that we were initially showing for that site. So we were, we were showing you 300 potential units on that R20 area, and the public was coming back with numbers like 140, 130, 120, 150. And I think even from, from council, there was some concern at the last meeting about, well, senior housing on a hillside and some of the other issues, the cost of construction relative to trying to make it lower income on a hillside. to trying to make it lower income on a hillside. So we were incorporating that feedback.
Okay. And the community, it wasn't coming from any specific area or group? It was pretty widespread?
Right.
Okay.
And I just want to add from a staff perspective, when we were looking at, we were kind of looking at R-20, right, as a concept. And when we started really focusing in on it, we realized that, you know, there's R-20A and there's R-20B, and they have different features. And so there were, just the fact that it was that larger acreage and that we could get the numbers that we needed through the R-20A site made it kind of fall in line and make sense to leave the R-20B, at least on the Orchard at the current zoning, which is 20 units per acre, except for senior housing is 30 units per acre.
Okay, thank you. And then on the question of the buffer, you mentioned the range is 15 to 30.
Right.
At the last meeting, staff had 22%. Has that been changed? I heard 20. Is it still, is it reduced to 20, 22?
I'd have to look and see exactly what the number is. I think we, I'm looking at a table here on the next slide, which shows 959, and we were talking about 800 before. It's a little higher than 22%.
Okay, all right. And since the range is 15 to 30, I think I agree with my colleague Teresa here. I would like to be at 15%. So, and I understand from staff, you just can't, you know, move a few units. But if there were the opportunity, we could reduce that reserve if it made sense looking at all the parcels.
Right.
Okay, thank you. And the commercial area and Maraga Ranch overlay, staff recommendation is wait till the next meeting to talk about density transfers. Now, if we waited to the next meeting to talk about that, and we weren't in favor of density transfers, but we wanted to increase housing there, we could do that at that time?
You could, because we're not proposing listing the ranch as an opportunity site. It's really more a policy question about should housing be permitted there.
Right, but we could do that at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we have flexibility. All right, thank you. And my next question, on Page 13, where you come down to the realistic number of units, 753, and then there's for low income, for low-income housing, and then 206 for moderate. I'll pause for, I'll keep going. And then you make the statement, the above distribution would meet the Town of Maraga 23 to 31 Rena goal, right? So now, are we saying that would meet each low, each income band, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate?
It would, yes.
It would, okay.
We are for, HCD's purposes, we're allowed to combine the low and the very low. We're allowed to treat those sites as the same. In other words, one site can meet both low and very low.
Right. And understanding that we're going to do inclusionary housing next meeting, just in terms of where the goalposts are, I think there's some questions. Inclusionary housing would apply to new projects, correct? Now, what's a project versus like an application? So take the Maraga Center development, right? Is that a, since that's a previously approved project, is the whole center excluded from any decision on inclusionary housing? So if they get an application in two years and we have an inclusionary housing, is it basically grandfathered to be excluded? So how does the Maraga, the idea is the project and applications for a Maraga Center?
So ordinarily, it would apply to all new housing units. So it doesn't really matter if it's an existing development. If new units are being added, then they would be subject to that requirement. Sometimes there's a minimum size threshold so that, for example, projects with fewer than five units are exempt, or six units are often, they may be exempt because you can't require a percentage when a project doesn't have a certain number of units. But as long as it's new, a new development, it can be, I mean, it would just be considered an infill project, a new infill project.
Okay, so...
We do have two applications for the Maraga Center. We have an application for Area 14 and an application for Areas 15 and 17. Both of those applications have been submitted. So they've been submitted under the zoning at that time, which did not include an inclusionary requirement. Therefore, there's no, there would be no affordable requirement on those applications, even though they haven't been approved because they have been submitted. But if a new application comes in after the inclusionary housing has been adopted and is in effect, then that would apply to all new housing applications.
Okay. And so since most of the Maraga Center, we do not have applications for new housing. And if the council did hypothetically adopt inclusionary housing, then those future new applications in the housing in the Maraga Center would be subject to inclusionary housing?
Yeah, they would.
Okay, all right. And then the same is true for Paulus, Colorado's?
No, I think that's already approv-
No, that's been approved.
Been approved, but we don't have applications for development?
Yes, we do. It's been entitled. It's done.
Okay. And then let's keep going. The Country Club on Augusta?
That's entitled.
That has been entitled. Okay, fine. So those two are excluded. Maraga Center, it's, most of it would, potentially could have inclusionary housing applied to it. Okay, and Indian Valley?
Yes, any new development in the town.
Right, okay.
So, you know, if, one of the things you can do for inclusionary housing is if you do five units, well, you don't have to develop a unit. You might have to, you know, pay a partial impact fee.
But when you say it like that, that's where it gets confusing, like, well, then, you know, Paulus is going to have new construction, new housing.
No. New application. Any new applications.
Okay. That, I think, is the best distinction. So now let's go to Indian Valley, where I think we have a conceptual application. So could you please explain how that applies if we were to adopt inclusionary housing?
I don't believe that we have an active application.
Okay. Something's been submitted, though, on Indian Valley?
Are we going a little far afield here?
Well, I'm trying to think.
We're off the agenda.
There's a question of where the goalposts, and there's confusion on what's in bounds and what's out of bounds. So this is my-
What's in bounds is what is recommended.
Right. But in terms of what is applicable to inclusionary, or not, understanding that's next week, this is the last development. I just want to confirm.
So I just want to remind the council that tonight is, we're talking about specific sites, not the inclusionary housing portion of the housing element. So that's, as has been mentioned, that's for another meeting.
Okay. It's just, the challenge is that these reports come out with three business days before the meeting, and I think it's fair that property owners know, well, what are the rules for my property? And it's not clear.
Do you have any other questions, Mike?
Yes, I do. Okay. Well, actually, that concludes my question.
Thank you. Steve, did you have some follow-ups?
Just basically one. And that is, so I'm hearing in the news, the popular news, of judges who are rejecting approved development projects, a couple in particular down in San Diego County, because they have not adequately addressed emergency egress and fires. So my question is, is the EIR going to address that? And how are we, are we comfortable that we're going to have that, that that's going to be addressed? And if that's out of scope, just say so, and I'll retract the question.
I can address that. So the EIR will address that and identify mitigation measures, and we'll be updating the safety element at the same time that we're updating the housing element and including some very specific policies and programs, working together with the fire district to address that very issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Are council members done with their questions? Okay. It's my turn. I get to do cleanup. I actually have a process question, Barry. So how are we doing on our schedule?
Well, we have a very aggressive schedule, and we need to keep at it. I think we're doing, we're doing okay at this point. Where I think we really need to move is starting the EIR. That's probably the biggest piece of the work effort in terms of labor. And so, you know, we're doing fine on the housing element. We resolved the sites. We've actually got most of the background information drafted. But there's a pretty heavy lift to get a full program EIR done that evaluates the effect of the changes we're talking about.
And so if I have this correct, it is important for us to provide direction on the zoning because that is a critical input into the EIR, and the EIR process can't start until we provide that direction.
We need a project to define, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. That was my only question. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none. Public comment? Would you like a break? Okay, let's do five minutes, please. So let's come back at ish. It's, yeah, at 8:40, please. Thank you. I think we're ready to start, everyone. All right, calling this meeting back to order, please. Thank you, everyone. We're still on Item 10A, Housing Opportunity Sites and Rezoning. I'm going to open up the public comment period. And again, reminder, three minutes, please. First person is Ashley Coats. Welcome, Ashley. Thank you for coming.
And I can't hear myself.
Can you hear me now? That's good.
I'm here as a 30-year resident and co-founder of a group called Home, which is home options in Maraga for everyone because we believe that everybody associated with Maraga should be able to afford to live. should be able to afford to live here, and not everybody needs a four-bedroom house, et cetera. So I'm in support of this process. I'm not going to say a lot of specific comments. I think we're going in the right direction. And I'm wondering if maybe there could be some... All these things that are going to be discussed on May 4 are pretty technical. If we could have a little bit of background ahead of time before the actual... what decisions you have to make, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Ashley. Next is Nikhil Gera. Are you here to talk about housing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here in person. I'm here as I'm the owner of a couple of the office parcels at Moraga Office Park on School Street, which is included as a potential opportunity site. So I have two comments. One is, I think it's great what we're trying to do and accomplish here and provide for housing. It was already zoned for both those things, and I've had some conversations with Avashan about potentially doing something there. Trying to work through that. What I'm running into is the following. While we talk about increasing the density and all these things, what is a constraining factor is the parking. Moraga has parking requirements of two and a half spaces per unit, regardless of the size of the unit. So if it's a studio or a three-bedroom, it's two and a half spaces, and that limits what you can really build. Specifically, in my property, which about the creek and part of the land is included in the creek, I get credit for the land, which is part of the creek, but I obviously can't park in the creek or build in the creek. So I'm further limited by what I can put on the property. So we need to think about what we do with parking. That's one point. And the second point is 20 or 24, based on what I'm doing in Lafayette and other parts of the state. I think even 24, if you want to have inclusionary housing, doesn't cover a developer's costs, given what construction costs and what everything else costs and all the fees are. And I don't think, at least I'm not able to make anything pencil at a 20 or 24 with an inclusionary housing component for those subsidized units. I just done a project in the city which has much higher densities with a 12% inclusionary housing requirement. So I'm just giving you context of what else is out there for things to consider. Those are my two points. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Jeffrey, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. My apologies.
No problem. My wife tells me I have horrible penmanship, so I'd be in line. Hi, my name is Jeffrey Stone. I'm a resident of Moraga. I have three daughters here. They're five, two, and six weeks. I look tired because of that.
We feel your pain.
Yeah, I love living here. I am a land use attorney, a contractor, a developer, and a real estate broker that owns a technology company inside of real estate. I touch every angle of real estate, from acquisition to disposition to leasing to anything in between. I've been fortunate in my career to work in every part of it, from high-rise construction in San Jose, where it comes to pension-sized assets, all the way into single-family residences. I own Lucas Ranch in Lafayette. I have a 47-unit project going inside of Lafayette. I have a 20-unit in Lafayette. I have a 54-unit in Danville. I have a couple hundred units going inside of Walnut Creek. So multiple projects. I've experienced in this. RENA, I've been focused on since the Association of Bay Area Governments has adopted it, and the state has finally followed suit like they typically do inside of the Bay Area. I'm on the Board of Directors of St. Montdavo. I've been so for eight years. I care greatly about open space and balancing the needs for housing and population and employment growth with a city or town that we can still feel like allows the younger people to come live here and raise a family so that they don't feel bankrupt and can also go out and eat dinner while not just worried about paying their property taxes and paying their mortgage interest and actually living a lifestyle that hopefully is consistent with when I grew up in Lafayette. I have two points. Parking. Parking is what's killing development in this town. You cannot expect a developer to build units at two-and-a-half units parking. And as SEQA has adopted, and we're looking at LOS rather than VMT, most engineers inside of the state of California have recognized that we are moving to a different type of transportation model and the 20- and 30-year outlook, and to pull cars off of the actual, the roads, and we all are familiar with the congestion we have. We need to think through smart development and growth development so that our projects can be consistent with RENA applications, but we, as developer, can actually consistently build projects that isn't restrained by the parking and the height and the setbacks that currently doesn't allow us to actually develop something consistent with an underwriting model. Second, if you're looking at density, we need to pay attention to what Lafayette is doing, in my opinion, because they're actually building units. Moraga's not building units. We need to pay attention to that. We need to pay attention to the cities in La Mirinda and inside Danville-Alamo for what is actually working so that developers can, from an inclusionary code standpoint, start augmenting and building very low-income, low-income, moderate, and other units rather than just market rate. If you can't incentivize developers from an underwriting model standpoint for the risk we have to take, we're not going to take it. With rising interest rates, with the way that inflationary models are working, with hard costs increasing, with the way that we look through the overall model, if you can't allow developers to come in here and build the units that provide for the working-class families so that they don't have to drive in here and work, we're not going to be able to build it. So I implore you, and I know that I'm probably over my three minutes, and I will be quiet, but again, I don't get to talk much. It's usually between 2:00 and 3:00 a.m. with my baby. I would suggest that you look from the lens of developers so that you understand what's actually going to get built here so that we can build it. And in another 15 years, we're not being forced into eight- and 10-story buildings because the state is going to continue to put pressure on the way that we develop these units. And if we don't pay attention today, we're going to get further constricted later down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Beans. Ellen, you're up next.
Sorry to get so... be so late in getting up here. Get tied up in the technology. That's a hard act to follow. That was very... I'm Ellen Beans, and I also am working with Ashley in a new grassroots organization, HOME, which Ashley explained. And I live in 20 Car Drive and been here since 1981. So I first just want to say a big, big thank you for the council and for the staff for the incredible outreach that you have made in this community so far. I, having just done a neighborhood coffee and inviting people into my house to hear this topic, I know how much energy it takes to reach out. And so to have that nearly 1,000 people in that home survey, I think is just phenomenal. So it just says to me, a heck of a lot of work has been done on this. And I am really grateful because I am very, very interested in this issue. I also think that this work to create multifamily housing that will help our workforce and help our St. Mary's College community and for all of the seniors who are interested in downsizing is essential for the vitality of our town to keep growing in many different ways. You've explained very clearly to many places the need to change the zoning in several areas in order to meet our housing goals. I know that it's already been said. You've already been in conversation with several property owners of office sites, plus multiple owners in the REEM and Moraga Shopping Centers, engaging them in considering redevelopment in multifamily housing. So now I am looking forward to some upcoming presentations on policies that could make it more attractive to property owners to build, actually build, the townhouses and the apartment buildings and the duplexes and the senior housing. I think those kind of policies I'm looking forward to seeing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Any other public comment on this item? All right. Oh, Dave, are you coming up? Welcome. Nice to see you.
I am up. So, good evening, Dave Berzoni. And hopefully, everybody got my letter.
Yes, we did.
I'm concerned about how I think some of our Area 5 R-20 properties are being treated differently than all the other properties that can possibly be upzoned to 24 dwelling units per acre. You know, as a matter of fact, I think our... We have Chapter 8.34 that's dealing with the R-20 zoning that applies to our Area Number 5, which is on the other side of the creek, and Area 14. And I understand that the proposal now is to allow 24 dwelling units per acre for Area 14, from what I saw tonight. I don't know if that's the case or not, but I want to encourage the town council to immediately change the current zoning that we have that applies to our properties in Area 14 and Area 5 to allow the state-recommended 24 DUA. Now, I think it's important to understand that changing from 20 to 24, it does not change the size of those potential units. There is an FAR requirement that's already in the zoning that limits the size of the building to a certain FAR. So the number of units, even though someone might say, "Oh, my God, you're going from 20 to 24 is ridiculous, and we want to make sure we're not going to be showing this, you know, this extra-large development." Well, the FAR, there is a restriction on our currently zoned properties on areas that you've designated. So you're making a mistake by treating our properties differently, taking properties that are not currently zoned housing whatsoever and allowing those properties to go up to 24. And you're taking our existing properties that have been identified previously in the 2015 housing element and the general plan and the specific plan as state default density affordable housing zones already. And now you're taking those properties, our properties, out of the state-recommended 24. So please, continue what you want to do, but don't mistreat our properties. And I think the current zoning that we have for Area 14 and Area 5 should be immediately changed to 24 DUA. Okay. The Moraga Shopping Center area. You know, if you're allowing a huge part of the REEM, and we've always stated that there's areas in our Moraga Shopping Center that are immediately appropriate for residential, and I believe that was brought up previously, and that's dealing with Kenny Morakami's nursery area, a perfect site. And, but like I said, you know, if the town is, you know, making potential recommendations for changes on other community commercial, please don't unilaterally exclude our properties. You know, it doesn't seem to be, you know, a reasonable application. And furthermore, the R-20 designation on the B, that is, any approval process is a discretionary hearing process. It's not a ministerial. So if we come with an application that's showing 24 DUA, and there's some reason that the town doesn't like it, it's a discretionary process. You don't have to allow it. So there are many reasons, and I've mentioned a few of those, why it's unreasonable for you to not increase our current zoning to 24 DUA.
Dave, you're over time. Do you mind wrapping up?
I know there's a lot of units. Just give me... You know, basically, a lot of these zoning changes don't make sense. On our R-5 area, it's completely surrounded by other properties that you do allow 24 dwelling units per acre. And it just doesn't make sense that you're... You know, we have properties that surround our orchard flat property that allows 24 DUA, and you're saying, no, on this property that's in the middle, you're not allowing that to be 24 DUA. So there's, you know, a lot of reasons, planning reasons, why these recommendations, these current recommendations, don't make sense. The recommendations that were offered by staff previously on the March meeting made sense. What we're looking at now is a radical change, so...
Dave, thank you.
Yes, all right. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. Okay, any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and it's time for council input and direction. Yes.
There was a couple points raised. I wonder if we could just get clarification of the current state of the staff package.
We can do...
Area 14 and Area 5, just to confirm.
I think we have that. Area 14 is, the recommendation is go from 20 to 24.
Correct.
And then the Area 5 is split. To, right, I have this right? That part of it is to increase from 20 to 24, and part of it is to keep it at 20.
Okay, and I think that helps to answer a question. Thank you.
Yes, so that's 20, and that's 24. No, those are designations, I believe, from the MCSP. So we're dealing with alphabet and numerical soup here. So just to keep things... Yes, of course. Okay, I'm reopening public comment. If you could kindly keep it to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. And if you could state your name for us.
Yes, my name's Brian Morris.
Okay, Brian, can you bring the mic down a little closer so we can sure hear you?
Yeah, I'm a long-term resident of Moraga, 45 years, on REEM Boulevard in the vicinity. I want to thank the council for the job that you do. And I know you work very hard, and something like this is an enormous challenge, and I really appreciate your efforts. I also appreciate Barry and Asha. I was one person with Ellen. We took the tour of the sites the other night and looked around, and they've done a very good job simplifying everything. And the map is very clear to those that, you know, don't follow construction that closely. And I commend them for it. I also recognize the need for affordable housing for people. My only concern is about livability in the area. We have quite a lot of traffic, and I've seen it increase over 45 years. And I'm glad that mitigation factors are going to be taken into consideration in these matters. I worry about ingress and egress in these troubled times. Moraga Road, Moraga Way. I'm sure those are going to be addressed by the planners in their review. And I know REEM Boulevard and REEM Center seems to be chosen by quite a few people as the favorite site for building, but it also has its limits. And if there's a fire danger category given for the REEM Center, that has to be considered. So I'm just concerned about making, keeping life livable in Moraga. And I understand the concerns, and I support the concerns of housing. But I would like you to take that in consideration when you develop your plans over the next few weeks and days. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming and for commenting. All right, any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. All right, now it's time for a council discussion. I would like to try something, if council members would be so willing, is to see if there are recommendations that do not require discussion first. Whereas there is... There are council members who support the recommendation. And then we devote our time to the areas where there are questions or concerns or people need to hear each other think.
Madam Mayor, as long as there's time for just overall comments
Absolutely.
at the beginning or end.
Absolutely, yes, yes. So, yes, and don't let me forget that mic, and I know you won't. Okay, so if I could refer everyone to Slide 30, which is the summary of the recommendations. The first recommendation is the R-20A to increase from 20 units per acre to 24 units per acre. Is there any need to discuss that? Is there any need to discuss that? Any need, anybody, are we good on that one? That is the small, little concentrated area. You can also look at Slide 13 if you want to refresh your memory on what we're talking about. That's the, below the orchard, the lower part of the orchard.
Yeah, that's Slide, that's Area 14 and part of Area 5.
Right.
Okay, are we, is that, is that one, and this was one where the joint, at the joint meeting, it was recommended to do this, so it's consistent with that recommendation. Are we okay moving forward on that? Okay, super, thank you. Sona?
Yes.
Okay, great. I assume that the next one, the R-20B Orchard Hillside Parcel, where the recommendation is stay at 20, that this is one we would like to discuss? Or is this one that people are...
I have a comment regarding it.
Okay, let's...
Dismissed it or not?
Let's just, I'll circle that. We'll come back to that one. The R-20B Area 14 increased from 20 units to 24, I believe Mr. Brizone is in support of that, so is, are we, are we good on that one?
I want to see where that is exactly again.
So you can go to Slide 13, and that is that vacant lot that is behind the senior residential care centers.
Okay, I'm okay.
Okay, so we're good on, is that a thumbs up? This is the new way of, this is Robert's Rules of Order, thumbs up. Okay, the MCSP Mixed Retail Residential, increase from 20 units per acre to 24, that is, for those who want to refresh their memory, that's Slide 15. This is consistent, I believe, with the recommendation that was made at the joint meeting with the Planning Commission, or the direction given by the council and the Planning Commission in the joint meeting. Does anyone want to revisit that one? This area behind Safeway, so this, this whole thing.
That flat area.
That flat area. Are we good? Okay, so that's good. All right, MCSP Mixed Office Residential, Slide 14, so that's kind of, it looks like a gerrymandered voting district. So, nice work. That's increase from 20 units to 24. I believe that is also consistent with the direction given at the joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the council. Does anyone want to revisit that?
Let's ask, are we okay with it?
Are we, thumbs up? Mike, you good? Okay. The rezoning of the Viator School, Maraga Way, Country Club Block, that is Slide 17, for those who want the visual. That block, which right now is, as I understand, a split zone, and this is to promote some consistency and allow for residential development. Okay, thumbs up? Mike?
Yes.
Okay, super. And then the MCSP Commercial and Plan Development...
We need to discuss.
Discuss because of the Garden Center?
Yes.
Okay, so that's for discussion. Then I assume we want to discuss the overlay? The Maraga Ranch overlay? All right, then moving to Reem, we have the Suburban Commercial. Let me see what slide that is. Which slide is that, Barry? That has to do with the Suburban Commercial recommendation, Mixed Office Residential.
I think, try 23.
Slide 23, allow housing up to 24 dwelling units per acre. I believe that was the direction from the joint meeting. Yes?
Yes.
Anyone, are we thumbs up on that? Okay, so that's good. Mixed Commercial Residential, the new zone, that is Slide...
24.
24.
That's actually 23.
That's also on 23?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Mixed Commercial Residential, 24 DUA.
Oh.
Yeah, so that's also Slide 23. Are we, that's also consistent, I believe, with the joint meeting? So we have thumbs up on that, so we're good on that. Okay, Community Commercial rezone, retain the zoning on the south half of the Reem Center and the Reem Theater. Would anyone like to discuss that?
So that's Slide...
That is Slide...
Barry has it up right now.
It's up on the screen.
Yeah, Barry has it up on the screen.
It's still Slide 23. It's still Slide 23.
So...
Are we good on that one? Teresa's good, Mike's good, I'm good, Sona's good. Steve's good.
I'm good. I think we're usually wrong slide numbers, that's fine.
Okay, and then the last one on Reem is Limited Commercial, that is the, that's the 7-Eleven...
Right.
Yeah, are we good on that one? Yeah, I'm good, 3, all right. So Reem is...
Good.
Done. So we have for discussion, three things with respect to the Maraga Center. Let's go with, first with the recommendation to stay at 20 DUA in Area 20B, which is the Orchard Hillside Parcel. Who would like to? There it is, so it's the 12.4-acre area, and that is going uphill in the Orchard, just below the Harvest Court Development.
Mayor, I raise this for...
Yes.
...consideration, so...
Please.
...to state my case. There are a couple reasons I'm okay with this change, which is no change, and that is, it will provide variety in terms of density and therefore likelihood of affordable housing. But my request is that, in direction to staff, is let's make sure we're consistent. You know, there are rezoning going to be done at Reem. Let's make sure that we apply the same expectation there with regard to size of any 24 DUA consistent with this. And maybe it already is, but I just haven't had a chance to really cross-check.
Thank you. Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, this particular site, in my opinion, is too steep for 20 dwelling units per acre, but I know that we can't go any less, so I would definitely not go more. But since that's what we've got, I think that's, I think what we have to be most concerned about is walkability on that site. I don't know how that's going to happen. If there's some way to have the larger buildings on the lower part, I would be, I would be very happy with that, because I know it's not all steep, you know, it's a gradual, but it is steep. So I'm okay with R-20 because we can't go any less. But I want to say, and I hope Dave hears this, I am delighted with all of this, and I think it's going to really add a lot of vitality to this town, and, you know, something that Maraga's been missing, and so I'm, I'm pretty happy. Thank you.
Mike, do you have anything to say?
Yeah. Somebody else to go, but, okay. On this one, I hear the point of view of the housing sites rezoning are all 24 except this, including Reem and the rest of the Maraga Center. What persuades me to keep this at 20 DUA are two things. The Commons from the residents, which was confirmed to be widespread and not a group, and number two, this is different from virtually every other parcel in Reem or Maraga because it's visible, at least partially visible. Visible from Maraga Way, visible from Maraga Road, visible from the center, visible from the Commons. That's important. I tend to agree with Teresa. If there were a way to say, well, part of that, if we could minimize the visual impact, and then the other part could be 24, I would, but we can't do that. So based on that, I hear the argument for consistency, but there's the two other overriding arguments in my mind, leave it at 20 DUA.
Thank you, Mike. Sona?
Thank you. I think other council members have already adequately addressed the points regarding the distinctions between those. I'll just say that when the town manager clarified that, yes, it's 20, but for senior housing, that could be up to 30, that gave me, you know, another kind of plus sign that there's continued opportunity, you know, maybe senior housing, whether or not that belongs there or not, I don't know. We're going to be talking about parking, we're going to be talking about other things later, but the potential for that to go up to 30 for senior housing, you know, makes me comfortable to keep it as is.
Okay, thank you. I am as well, for two reasons. One is what Mike mentioned, this is a unique parcel or area. It's unique. And two is, I believe, if I'm recalling correctly, we really struggled with this area in connection with the MCSP because of its visibility, because of its character, and so I do think that there is good reason for the public looking at this area differently and for us to keep it at 20. So I think we have consensus on that. All right, let's move on to MCSP Commercial and Plan Development, Slide 19. Steve, you wanted to tee this up, I believe, because of the Maraga Garden Center site.
Correct. I think we, this is an appropriate site to give the owner the option to make it residential. It is currently not being used as commercial, and I don't have much more to say about it other than, to me, it's a logical piece to make residential, so I'm happy to be educated otherwise.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I see is with all of these properties all around this area that are going to be 24 dwelling units per acre, which I'm excited about, they need to, all of these people, hundreds of people, need a place to shop, and right now, all we have there is, you know, Dynasty Nails, a couple restaurants, Safeway, and what I'm looking forward to is some cool places to shop. And if we put it all residential, we won't have those cool places to shop, and the town likes to have the money from the taxes of people having places to shop. So if you add, you know, so many people, we can always add more housing, you know, the next element that comes around, the seventh, you know, housing cycle. I would leave that, like Barry had said, like a bank, that that's a possibility in the future, but I think let's see how this turns out with all of these housing that we've already got on the map and see what happens, because we might, you know, once it becomes a house, you can't really say, "Okay, get out of here, we want to have some cool restaurants and some cool shops." So that's my thought.
Mike, you have thoughts?
What's, looking at the Garden Center, what's that area immediately to the left zoned?
That's 24 DUA, isn't it?
No, but what's the type? Is that retail residential mix?
Yeah, it's retail residential.
Okay, so if we included the Garden Center to be retail residential mix, it could be retail or it could be residential, right? We would have that flexibility, correct? By nature of definition.
It could be 100% residential as well.
Right, understood, and we don't know, so I'm just saying, because I agree with what Teresa said, I like to see some cool services too, and it could be.
Right.
And it could be residential, and we don't know, but it could be first floor retail, second floor residential. Okay, so I would actually be in favor of carving that nursery out to be retail residential mixed, which to me gives us flexibility.
May, Steve, can I just ask you, is that, was that the zoning you would propose?
Yes.
Retail residential?
I am absolutely happy with retail residential.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just make one quick note, actually, there's a second reason that I'm proposing this, and that is the recognition, and I'm not the only one to recognize this, we are overbuilt in commercial. There are still an awful lot of empty storefronts with no immediate identified nifty, you know, occupants, and that is a result of the town being zoned originally for a population of 55,000, and at least greatly built commercially for that population, and we're never going to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Sona, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, hearing everyone's comments definitely has put me a bit on the fence, because we have maintained, and we all agreed, to maintain community commercial in Reem for some of the reasons that we talked about in terms of having a vital access to retail for housing that hopefully gets built in those areas, and having that be walkable and kind of a hub. So there's some kind of argument here about the parity between these two centers and having kind of that balanced and measured approach of potentially getting more units than we would all like in the future. So the arguments, though, of potentially just what I'm not following, and I want to get clarity on from council members that are recommending this, is, is it kind of slicing that piece into being commercial residential, but then maintaining the rest of this area as community commercial?
That is correct. This, what I'm proposing for consideration is just where that nursery was.
Mm-hmm.
It's really an eyesore right now, and the rest of it remain as commercial.
Yeah, there's a gas station there, too. But that, I mean, that would be part of this, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
Sona, we interrupted you.
Well, you can see I'm balancing a number of these different kind of perspectives, because I think, you know, slicing it that way, I want to, what are the downstream implications of doing a zoning that way, of slicing it and dicing it in that way? Are there downstream implications that we should be thinking about? I'd like to hear from staff a little bit on that.
You guys doing an Etch A Sketch?
Yeah, we're trying to give you something that we're...
She visualizes it.
Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Are there any downstream implications of doing this?
Yeah, the gas station's a little bizarre.
Someone has to talk to him in a moment.
So, yeah, I think the issue is whether we're going to put the gas station and the nursery both in the rezoned area, because otherwise you'd be left with a little orphan parcel where the gas station is, isolated all by itself with the same zoning as the rest of the shopping center. rest of the shopping center. Or you could, to, to your point earlier about the gerrymandered zoning districts, you'd have a zoning district that was just the nursery with a little arm coming around the back along the road that picked up the gas station that was still commercial.
And could you, would you include both?
Sorry?
Could you include both, you know, include both?
You could include both, yeah, you could include both. Nursery is an acre, I think the gas station is less than that.
Yeah.
Barry, if, I'm sorry, I'm out of, I'm out of order, but I'm not going to call a point of order myself. The, wouldn't it just be an extension really of the, of Slide 15, Maraga Center area, MCSP mixed retail residential zone?
Right, it is.
So you would just redraw that? And cut that out of the commercial one?
Yeah. Straight across. Yeah, so, so the gas station would be included in the area to be rezoned.
Correct.
Right.
Right, well, that, yes, yeah. Okay, Sona, I'm sorry, we, we were like talking all over you.
No, no, this is helpful. So last question then, so if we take that approach, then does this elevate this into an opportunity site? This new piece that we just, excuse me, that we just kind of broken off, that would then be an opportunity site?
The, the nursery would, the gas station probably would not.
Well, yeah.
But the, the nursery would be an op, considered an opportunity site. It's about an acre or so, we'd be looking at 24 units or so.
If, if the developer said that they wanted to do, I mean, the property owner said they wanted to build housing there.
Which we don't have.
He's right there.
All right, Sona, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm, I'm mulling over the answers to that.
Okay, I, I guess I, I'll, I'll weigh in. I, I'd be in favor of, of doing that, of extending the, because it, it just logically, aesthetically, visually, it makes sense to me. And, and I hear you, I, I, you know, we don't want to eliminate all commercial, but there, there is plenty of room left. And, and I just think if, that, that it, it's kind of, from a, from a visual perspective, it, it makes a lot of sense to me. So I would, I would, I would be in favor, so we have three, three in favor of, of doing it, so I think that's the direction. All right, thank you, Steve, for raising that.
Thank you.
Okay, last question, Maraga Ranch Overlay District. Should residential uses be permitted? Or should we take this up when we talk about density transfers? Mike?
Yeah, I, I think the question I asked before is if we, when we talk about density transfers at the next meeting, we can come back and if we don't want to do density transfer, we can talk about housing. My initial thought is, yes, I'm open to some type of housing there, but I think it's logical, we have two options next meeting, let's wait till then.
Any other thoughts? Teresa?
I agree with Mike.
Okay. Steve?
I'm receptive, but concerned because the, some of the concern about that area is now in a separate area, separate zone or separate parcel, that being the storage. Yeah, there's storage in this area, but at the same time, you know, it has a certain character, not yet perhaps developed to be a, a center for the town, but has the potential to be the center for the town. Having said that, if it's done well, I'm okay with it.
Okay with?
With, with adding the option of residential.
Okay. Sona, do you have any thoughts?
I'm with Steve on that and appreciate, you know, learning, learning and listening to hear about the, the character and some of the significance around there, so I'm attuned and, and wanted to understand that. Also, you know, straw pulling people in my demographic who walk around this area all the time have visceral kind of reactions to, can't we do something more here, something better here, isn't, isn't this prime opportunity? I've heard a lot of that, and that was kind of reinforced in the community input that we heard. But there's also, you know, some concerns about preserving the character of it. So I, I am with Steve that I, I'm, I'm open to thinking about zoning that for residential uses.
Yeah, a, as am I. I guess the, the advantage of, of considering this in the context of density transfers is that, you know, once we zone for residential, we've zoned for residential, we can't, we can't reel it back. So I would, I would be in favor of considering it, but in the context of a density transfer. Is that where everyone is? Or are we, are there folks who would consider by right?
I'm open to considering everything, but I think that the next meeting is when we should be talking about that, not this one.
Okay. Does that work, Barry?
Yes.
And Cynthia? Okay. All right, Mike, did you want to say a few words in conclusion? I, I promised you you could.
I want to thank everybody, staff, for making good progress. Barry, Afshar, Cynthia, very good. This iterative process, I think, is really good, is we have information, we give feedback, we hear from residents, we hear from property owners, we make decisions, we'll get a little more feedback, and it's okay if it changes, let's have the discussion, so I want to thank you. There is a reference in the staff report to the next meeting of May, May 4th, and I do want to point out, council members are supposed to be canvassed, I wasn't canvassed, I have an obligation that I can't change. And the next meeting's going to be really important, an inclusionary housing density bonus, I'd really like to be there, so I'm requesting that meeting be rescheduled so I can attend, otherwise it'll be for council members. I fully support all types of housing in Maraga, as I've said before, townhomes, condos, apartments, ADUs, and different income levels. We have been mandated by the state to zone 1118 plus a buffer, which is a total of 3, 1,362. This will exceed the maximum population as stated in the general plan and increase issues of fire safety, evacuation, traffic congestion, open space view sheds, schools, and more. I promise to work towards protecting the values of residents while being fair and reasonable with developers and property owners. I want to further say, because we've covered some of this, so I don't want to repeat it, I do want to say that I have some concerns about inclusionary housing, as mentioned in the staff report, that if included, could trigger the relaxation or would give a density bonus and waive our development standards for up to five stories, 35 DUA, and setbacks. So I would ask that, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of comments of, everybody does inclusionary housing, let's just force the property owners to do it, and let's move on. There are some other consequences, first of all, to the property owners, but also to our town, if we do that. We could have some of those items, and when there's comments here, staff's going to talk to the property owners, developers, that's great, please mention this to the residents, that if we do inclusionary housing, four or five story buildings could happen, 35 DUA, and minimal setbacks, because those are some triggers for our residents. So I'm just, I'm open-minded, but I'm concerned, and we'll talk about it next time, that's fine. And if I'm going to move towards conclusion here, and that ends my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, are we good? All right, ready to move on to the next item, thank you. Item B, local roadway safety plan, this is not an action item, we are being asked to receive an initial presentation by staff and provide feedback, if any. Sean, is this you?
It, it is, but I, I have a group that also will be coming out of operate the computer
Wonderful, bring in the group. So we'll do a staff presentation, then we'll do council member questions, public comment, and if any council members have feedback, we will do that at the end.
Assuming the mic's on? Yes.
We hear you loud and clear, Sean.
Great, thank you. So, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Sean Knapp, your Director of Public Works and the Town Engineer. So as you're aware, the, the town's direction has been to change, they changed the operation process from a reactionary, providing reactionary services to more analytical and proactive services. And as such, the town council has part of the physical 2021, 22 capital improvement approved plan, approved eight projects, eight safety projects for a total of about $1.5 million in investment. And I could quickly name some of those projects, you know, we have the minor traffic safety, we push-button upgrades, the St. Mary's roundabouts and Canyon, Bolinger Canyon roundabouts project, Corliss Drive, safe routes to school, Maraga Road complete streets, the Canyon Road complete streets, the HSP crossroads and signage improvement project, and also the local road safety plan. And that brings us today, we're going to be talking about the local road safety plan, and the council and the town were awarded $40,000 for this project to develop a local road safety plan. And we put out an RFP for qualified consultants, and we, the town awarded a consultant agreement to TJKM to prepare our local road safety plan. So today, I'd like to pass it off or introduce our LS, our LRSP, the Local Road Safety Plan Project Manager, Brett Swan here. Brett's been with us for about 12, I mean, sorry, Brett's been with us for about two years, he's our Senior Civil Engineer. And at this point, I'm going to turn over the presentation, and he's going to go over a few items, and we're also going to introduce our consultant tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We are here this evening to introduce the LRSP, which is the Local Roadway Safety Plan, and to initiate the county engage, or the community engagement process to this, which is part of the pro, process for the whole planning. TJKM will be coming before you shortly to present information and to elicit your feedback on this, because it's important for this process. This will be the first of three anticipated meetings where we will be discussing this. As we progress through the process, we will be coming back as the LRSP is being developed. To help make this, to make it easier to receive public feedback, TJKM has, has established a website, a project website, through which we will be presenting information on the project as it progresses. We will be receiving community feedback, so there's a link there for the community to put in areas of concern or other things that they'd like to engage us about, road safety on segments of the road or intersections. And we will also allow the community to subscribe to the project, so they're able to follow along with the project and be engaged throughout the project as they like. In addition to that, to help facilitate their access to that website, because it is run and actively managed through TJKM, we have put a link on the Public Works website for the city that is listed under the Capital Improvements Program, under the Local Road Safety. So if you click on that, a website comes up, and it will have a link in it to show you how to get to it. It's called the LRSP Information and Feedback Link, and it's in the middle, it's highlighted, so they can click on that, and it'll take them right to the website for it. Now, in the interest of saving time, let me introduce Sayed here from TJKM. Sayed Fakhri is a civil and traffic engineer from TJKM, prior to which he had worked, he's worked for them for a couple of years, and prior to which he'd worked for the city of Mountain View for 19 years, I believe he said, as their traffic engineer. And he was also an adjunct professor at San Jose State. So with that, let's welcome Sayed.
Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Member and Member of Publix. So my name is Sayed Fakhri, and I'll be presenting Local Roadway Safety Plan tonight. Next slide. So for the agenda tonight, we're just discussing briefly what is a LRSP, the, the process of developing it, the benefits, and scope of work and schedule, and then the project website and an interactive map input that just we walk you through, it's a short video, and also open discussion and questions. Next slide, please. So what is a Local Roadway Safety Plan? The overarching goal of this plan is to reduce collisions and mainly fatalities and severe injuries. Also prioritize the improvements for the whole city, because we are, we are looking really not at specific location, piece meeting, we are looking at systematic approach and holistic approach, looking at the whole town and finding, based on data, where are the issues, safety issues, and then prioritizing improvements. So adopting a Local Roadway Safety Plan also makes the town eligible for Highway Safety Improvement Program grant and MTC One Bay Area grant. From now on, the federal fund, which is distributed by Caltrans for Highway Safety Improvement Plan, the grant will not be accepted unless the town has a, has a plan, a Local Roadway Safety Plan. So that, that will also help you for the grant, if you already have, and already have for the whole town, and you have already prioritized, and you have already discussed the mitigations at specific locations, so that will help greatly to acquire fund. So that the solution or mitigation for safety is engineering, but also the other strategies, the five Es, what we call, which is education, enforcement, engineering, obviously, equity and emergency medical services, so addressing all those issues. Next slide, please. So the process, just to point out that LRSP, there's guideline for Federal Highway Administration, how to develop it, and also Caltrans guideline, so we have to follow that guideline closely in, in preparing the, the plan. So we look at five years of collision data from, in this case, from 2015 to 2019, and, and the reason is because some of the data might not be available from 2022. The, the collision analysis will basically looks at, at the trend of collisions, the type of collisions, as being vehicle to vehicle or bicycle involved or pedestrian involved, severity and the kind of violation category, lighting conditions, et cetera. Also geographical analysis, the trend area where the locations are. Identifying high injury intersections and also mid-block or roadway segment, identification of emphasis area, and the type of crash violation, and, and also the behavior, it could be different group in, in certain area. And then identification of practical viable countermeasures and developing countermeasure toolbox. The reason is this different type of collision requires different type of countermeasure, and the countermeasures could be, again, one of those five Es, not necessarily always engineering. And then you develop safety projects for high injury location. This is a short video for, from FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, talking about the Local Roadway Safety Plan. So that was a short video going through the process and what is a Local Roadway Safety Plan. So the benefit is data-driven, as it was pointed out on the video, to identify, analyze, and prioritize roadway safety improvements. Obviously, considering stakeholder, community feedback is a big part of it, to identify additional traffic safety-related concerns. So the feedback should be specific to traffic safety, because LRSP is just addressing roadway safety. As I mentioned earlier, this is a holistic approach incorporating more than just engineering solutions, allows the town to implement a systematic approach to address collisions, and then tailor to town-specific traffic safety needs. So it's not really just one approach for every town. Every town has their own, you know, specific needs and specific general plan, and other safety plan, and bike and pedestrian plan. So we have to look at all those things. And then implementation. Obviously, there's a help from grant, HSIP, OAB, and also, you know, the towns could decide to do a CIP project and spend their own money. But there are helps and implementation. As it was mentioned before, the safety issue is just traffic safety. Next slide, please. So just to discuss the five Es of traffic safety, let's start from education, which is an important element. And there are some safe route to school programs that cities can apply for grant also, and that is really helping a lot of school kids and parents about traffic safety near schools. Enforcement is a big element of it. And then it comes to engineering, where, you know, you do an intersection improvement, mid-block improvement, and make it safer, and address the type of collision that's happening. And then emergency medical services, where you have to develop the routes, what is the easiest, and help people who happen in accident. And then equity, where you address all the community, including communities of disadvantage. So for Moraga Local Roadway Safety Plan, the scope of work is to do the visioning, project initiation and management. Document review is basically, during the visioning and project initiation, which is this, we also need feedback from the community and from stakeholders. And then document review is what the consultant asks. We will look at all the previous city documents, like your general plan, your specific plans, and also your master plans for bike and pit. So looking at all those gives the consultant a direction, too. And then it's data collision, which is the collision data collection, which could be different sources. Collision is one of them. And then the analysis of the collision, as I mentioned, the type of collision, and the type depending on severity, the type depending on who is involved, the conditions of roadway, the time of the day, those are all important analysis, those are all important data. And then if there are proposed ordinance and policies that comes out of this Local Roadway Safety Plan. Countermeasure selection, again, countermeasure is not a cookie cutter where you can apply everywhere. You have to look at the community, community standards, community input, and their practices. And then you develop safety projects. And developing safety projects, the benefit, the cost is also important. So that's why you get, you have a Local Roadway Safety Plan. You also have a safety project that's included, and then showing the benefit and costs will help, too. And then the final Local Roadway Safety Plan, which includes some material, at least two application, to be ready for submitting to Highway Safety Improvement Program. Next slide. This is the schedule. It might be hard to read, but the total, if you're looking, we started at beginning of March. It will end up at the end of June, which I think that's the schedule where we can qualify for applying for grants. And then the process, as I included in the scope, and then the council meeting is the April that we have now, and there are two more council meetings. Next slide, please. For the project website, as Brett pointed out, that will be in the city's website, that when you click it, it takes you to this one. If you want to interactively log your complaint, or your perception of which intersection or which location you see more safety needs, needs for the safety. So you can look at this website, and I think next slide gives you some direction how to go and log your slides. So you have that report area of concern. You click there on the website. And once you click there, it takes you to the next slide. So it shows up, is this one or the next one where it shows? So this shows the map where you can zoom in and point out, for example, the first one is the location, and the second one is a stretch of roadway. So you can click for the location, or you can, or both could click at that segment of the roadway. Next slide, please. And then you can type, once you pin a location, you can type your concern and done, and then move on to the next line or segment of the highway. Is this the slide where you can press the interactive? So this slide just shows you a demonstration of how you log your concern at a specific location and/or a segment of the roadway. And also, you can type, how you can type the specific concern you have. This one shows collision data. Basically, this is a draft of our analysis shows collision data from 2015 to 2019. And it shows the type of collisions, the severity of the collision, and the fatal collision. So from collision data from 2015 to 2019, most of the collisions have occurred on main arterial, Moraga Road, Moraga Way, Ream Boulevard, and St. Mary's Road. Several are fatality to severe injury on Moraga Road and Moraga Way and Canyon Road. Previous collision data used to calculate benefit-cost ratio. So what we do is, the type of the collision, if you have a mitigation measure, an improvement that has a cost, and also the benefit is you reduce severity or fatality. So that's a big benefit. And obviously, the more benefit over cost ratio qualifies for the grant better. These data are preliminary and need to be analyzed further. I think we missed that slide that shows how to go back. Isn't there a play button on this one? Yeah. So basically, what it does, we had in your office, what it does, once you go to this website, and you click on the location, it takes you to the location, to the zoom in.
I think you can be confident that we're all going to try it once it goes live. So don't worry about that. We're good.
We tried it in Brett's office, so it did work. Anyway, so we are ready for council feedback and questions.
Well, let's do questions first. Any questions? Mike?
Yes, on one slide, you had noted this is just traffic safety, not other safety. I just want to confirm, traffic safety includes pedestrian safety?
Definitely, pedestrian, bicycle. So by traffic, we don't mean the traditional or old-fashioned vehicle only. It's pedestrian, public transportation, what I'm, what we mean, or what the Local Roadway Safety Plan is, other type of, you know, crime, or non-traffic related safety.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Do we have any public comment? Dave? Welcome back.
Thank you. As a resident who's been here since 95, and my wife even longer, and living on Moraga Road, at one of these very precarious intersections, and having at least one engineer on the council, and some of you who have probably been through this process before, my question is, what is the end game here? Is it to actually implement safety measures, or are we going through the process, again, about traffic calming that we've done before, five years ago, six years ago, seven years ago, when we did undergrounding of utilities, and then did temporary restriping, and bike lanes, and things like that, that were going to be tried for a temporary period of six months to a year, and then modified with permanent? Again, I have no problem doing further analysis, but analysis for the sake of analysis without modifications to actually make our roadways and links between the shopping centers and paths to school safer, seems to be needless money spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comments. Are there any, is there any council member feedback? Teresa?
Thank you. And I was happy to, first of all, thank you for this report. And the website looks fabulous. I'm really looking forward to using that, you know, just to see how it all works, and to tell people. Because we all get comments from residents about situations that they're concerned about. So this is a great tool to let you guys know what the residents are saying. And I appreciate what Dave was saying, because I used to live on El Perizo, which you would know, almost your neighbor. And so I've experienced some of the concerns that you have. So getting back to this being tailored for the town's specific needs, when I saw that it was five Es, I kept thinking, okay, those are five. But we have one other big E that everybody is worried about, and that's evacuation. So just in your concepts, and in what you're thinking about, please broaden your scope a little bit to six Es. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Any other council member comments? Yeah, Steve?
I welcome this. It's obviously critical. I think the end product is going to be recommendations, and I think Said mentioned that it may lead to, or Brett mentioned that it may lead to applications for grants, becoming eligible for grants. So I'm all for moving this forward. Go for it.
Yeah, I just want to thank you very much for the presentation. And, you know, I think this is, this is important. It's been a priority of this council's, especially pedestrian safety. And I think it's consistent with the implementation of the whole Vision Zero concept, both at the county level and here locally, whereas, you know, the only, we're not satisfied till it's zero. So this is really important to that. So let's get this done, let's get the funding, and let's implement the measures. Yes?
Yes, I just want to add that the website is now live. So anybody who's watching, or, and we'll put this in About Town, and you should tell your friends, they can go on there. And if they have concerns regarding specific corners, or streets, or areas, they can put it on the map now. And then it says in the staff report by April 22nd, is that still the date, Sean, for the survey? Because we are going to have yet another survey to get community input, and we're going to need your help, because we're probably not going to leave it open for a month, because we don't have that much time on this project. So tell us a little bit about the survey, Sean.
Sure. So much of this program is based on input from the, you know, the residents and the community. It's data-driven, it's based on data, but that information can be generated from the residents. And we have a tight schedule in that we're trying to get us positioned to get potential grants that are coming online. And we have the opportunity, if the grants don't come on as fast as they are, we can move or slow down the process as we're going along. So, you know, as far as the getting out and trying to get, you know, connect with the community, we're going to do a lot of outreach with our About Town, our website, these meetings, anywhere else. The council members can talk about it to anybody in the public. Please go to the website, put your information down there, and give us feedback. And it's very innovative. We're going to, you know, we'll be coming back multiple times, both to the community meetings, and also to the council to get additional information. I think one of the key items on this project, and all the projects that we're doing, they're building blocks. And so instead of jumping ahead and starting and doing one-off projects, when we don't have an analysis of what the needs are for the whole city, holistically, we're taking a step back and developing thoughtfully a plan on how to address our needs. And then the council can go through and program projects to address these. But trying to tackle things without the information is not a very good method for trying to achieve the results that you really want in the long run. So this is going to give us a good start, give us the background that we need to do successful projects that are needed by the community, and also wanted by the community.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you for coming. Nice to meet you. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right, item 10C, allocating ARPA dollars to our, well, Moraga Small Business Recovery Grant Program. This is, and something that we discussed extensively and exhaustively at our last meeting, and gave staff specific direction to come back to us with a fully-baked small business relief program administered by the town. So that is what we have before us. So we are being asked tonight to consider approving a resolution that does two things. First, it approves the appropriation of $150,000 of ARPA funds to the Moraga Small Business Recovery Grant Program, and two, authorizes the town manager to launch the program. Recovery Grant Program, and two, authorizes the town manager to launch the program. Cynthia, do you want to do a presentation, or should we just go right to questions?
I don't have a presentation, I want to say two things, maybe two things, I don't really know.
We'll give you three.
Okay. What I want to say is, we took the information that you provided at the last meeting, a couple changes. One is, the recommendation was to run the, have the grants available through December 31st. Based on feedback from the chamber, we extended that to March 30th, 2023. Hopefully, that won't be a problem and that people need these grants, and we'll get them out faster. And the other thing is, I reviewed the ARPA final rule, and the application is set up so that it requests the minimum amount of information for us to show that they qualify, which means they need to prove that they're an impacted small business. So they need to show that they've been impacted by decreased revenue or gross receipts, increased costs, capacity to weather financial hardship or challenges covering payroll, rent, or mortgage, or other operating costs. If they can do that, they qualify for a grant. We've listed the eligible expenses and we're ready to go. So we have the draft application that's included in the report, and we can get everything up tomorrow, we're ready to go. That's the end of my report. I'll take questions.
Thank you, excellent presentation. Any questions of Cynthia? Mike?
Thank you. Yes, that was a great presentation. So, and again, what you touched on is what I wanted to ask. Page two towards the back, you're saying, in short, businesses must self-certify that they qualify. So, you know, you have criteria out here that says, do you have decreased revenue or increased costs? I mean, so are we, are we saying we're going to take their word that they have decreased revenues? Or then I sound like you just said they have to have some gross receipt documentation. Could you elaborate on?
Yes, we, on the form, it has them check the box that indicates which one they're claiming or multiple that they might be claiming to prove economic hardship, and then we're asking for documentation. This documentation will be used for when we're audited by the federal government to ensure that we have spent our ARPA money consistent with the final rule.
Okay, so there should, has to be some, they have to give you something that says, hey, my revenues are down?
Yes, we need some, we need some proof, and we also need their federal ID number and them to complete a W-9 so that we can cut them a check. So this is minimal, this is minimum that we need.
And my second question, I think we had talked last time, but let's take a similar town like Lafayette, and I think they exhausted funds in 15 days. How does this program compare to theirs, do you know?
You know, I think I looked that up for last meeting, but I couldn't, I couldn't tell you specifically right now.
Okay, it's not critical. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Cynthia? Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Cynthia, on the application form, third line down, it says, own or operated, is that a typo? Should it be owned and operated? I see elsewhere it says owned and operated. At least it's, there's an inconsistency, I think. If we could get that resolved, minor stuff. And, yeah, that's really the only.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions?
No. Oh.
All right, any public comment? Dave?
Back again, trifecta.
Hat trick.
Trifecta tonight.
You got a hat trick tonight.
Steve, were you going to say something? I saw that mic come on.
No, I'm recording my voice.
Your timer's going, Dave.
I had extensive conversations in the last day with the Chamber of Commerce. As you probably know, I've done more with small business in this community than probably any other individual, as far as bringing them to the community and having interactions with them in this community. I am concerned with these funds having been paid already to the town of Moraga and not distributed timely to small business in this community. Small businesses have been suffering for a long, long time, with rent costs, with labor costs, with costs that they cannot keep up with. A recent example of that is one business operator who is no longer here in a brick and mortar business who used to run two restaurants in this community, who ended up leaving and could very well have used some of these funds. And my understanding with dealing with many different communities on the retail level and small businesses is that these funds have been distributed much more timely and much larger amounts than what are being proposed today. So $150,000 equating to 30 small businesses in a community of this size, we're not talking about just brick and mortar businesses, talking about home-based businesses, sole proprietors, people who have expenses and have a lot of pride and may not want all their information public as well. So I'd have concern, again, as far as how that information is out there. W-9 are certainly required for any federal payments, but I'd be concerned about anything additional beyond an affidavit that attests that they've had loss of income, higher expenses, unable to pay rent, or using their funds for additional marketing or promotions, I think, as the application indicates. And I'd want to make sure that those are held very confidential, because in a community of this size, work travels fast. So again, I think my concerns are such, and you can certainly circle back with the chamber and the leadership there, and they seem to echo these concerns, is that it's not enough money, and it's certainly not fast enough. It's a good start, but we've already lost some good people. Let's not lose anymore.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment on this matter? Okay, I will close public comments. Any council member comments, or shall we? Yes, Vice Mayor.
I just want to say I support this, and I want to reiterate from our last meeting that this is not necessarily the endpoint. So we're going to, it's a dynamic situation, and we aren't going to spend all the funds immediately, and budgets can be adjusted.
Any other comments? Mike?
Okay, I've got a question for Cynthia about what Dave just was saying about these pages being confidential. How does that work? His concern about?
Yeah, well, we redact information if, you know, people asked for that information, but we would generally summarize the businesses that we gave the funding to. We're not going to give the details about how they were impacted.
Okay, thank you.
But we could give you a summary of like X many businesses said they had increased costs, or, you know, that kind of information.
Mike?
Yes, thank you. I support the program, and I heard the chamber had a good conversation with town manager, so it sounds great, so I think everybody's aligned. And as Steve mentioned, as I said in my report out, the chamber is working on the second part of their presentation before the end of May, and we will listen to that, and we have the opportunity to grant more money or not at that time. Thank you.
Cynthia?
Very supportive of this program, and would like to see it up and running, as we promised, you know, to prioritize speed here. So thank you for getting the application done, and looking forward to putting it on the website.
Vice Mayor, did you want to say something else?
Ditto.
What she said. Yeah, I think, you know, we were, last meeting, we were clear, we want to get hands, money into the hands of our struggling businesses as soon as possible, may not be soon enough for some. We provided direction that we wanted a town-administered, applicant-friendly, appropriate record-keeping and documentation, and collaboration with the chamber on getting the word out. All of that direction has been followed, so we're ready to go. I'm ready to go, let's go. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion? Teresa?
Thank you. I move that we approve the appropriation of $150,000 from Fund 102, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, for a Moraga Small Business Recovery Grant Program, and authorizing the town manager to implement the program.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to capital asset replacement five-year plan. This also is not an action item. This, as I understand it, is a run-up to the budget process to provide input and policy level direction to staff as it develops the final five-year capital improvement program. Brianna, given the time, I think you can assume we are on it and fully informed, so we leave it to you to highlight what you think is appropriate, and then just leave time for questions.
Sounds good, thank you very much. It's a great position to be in here, be in, that I'm not coming forward to tell you something's broken, that we're in dire need, that something's shut down or closed to the public. So we really are in a good position with our asset replacement program, and that's really thanks to all that you've kind of prioritized and invested over the last three years. We have invested close to $1.3 million over the course of three years into our capital assets. It's also excellent and efficient this year, that last year we transitioned to a five-year capital asset program that aligned with our transition to a five-year CIP, which means we've already known what projects were on the horizon and scheduled to do for next fiscal year. We did kind of go out and analyze and assess everything that was scheduled, and we did make some slight adjustments. For example, there were two sewer laterals that were showing they were still in decent condition, and we like to get, you know, as much longevity out of every asset as we can, so we pushed those out a little bit. So before you are in your packet, you see what we're recommending, the highest priority items. We really focused on the first two years, because years three, four, and five, we will probably adjust.
Brianna, I'm sorry to interrupt, is that supposed to be up on the screen?
Not unless you want it to be.
Oh, okay, that's fine, never mind.
Okay. I know we were tight on time, so I was foregoing the PowerPoint, but I was just going to look at my last slide, and what we're recommending for next year is the metal entrance gate at the hacienda, that's a security issue. The big ticket item is the pavilion flagstone staircase, and we've been talking about that for a while, and you are all well aware of the condition. It would, it's recommended as a two-year project, so year one design, year two construction. Replacement of the picnic tables at Rancho Laguna Park, those are well past their useful life, we have rot in numerous tables, and that project fortunately qualifies for our Recycle Smart funding. Our two vehicles, we have, we recommend two vehicles every year, just so that we stay on top of it. One is always a police vehicle, and then the other is typically a non-police vehicle. This year, it's a public works vehicle. And then our IT hardware. And there is a higher cost recommended for next year, and that is because our tricaster, which is the device that's utilized to livestream the meetings, is past its service life and in need of replacement. But again, that portion of our IT recommendation qualifies for the Comcast PEG funding. So, you know, we're looking at the condition of everything, the availability of funding, the capacity of staff to get the work done, and those are our highest priorities. And then looking to the following year, year two, the two sewer laterals, the flagstone staircase or the construction portion, again, two vehicles, and then our IT. So we're really getting on top of things. These aren't as lengthy as a list as we've seen. We're starting to see some of the higher dollar, larger projects. We were doing a lot of the little stuff the last couple of years, trying to, you know, get back on top of everything. And with your direction here tonight, we'll embed this into our capital improvement program, which Sean is scheduled to bring back to you at the next meeting. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or have any feedback that you have.
Thank you, Brianna. Any questions? Mike?
And I know most do not want to hear any of these questions, but I'm sorry, I do have to ask some of these. So the flagstone, okay, 255,000, and you and Norm gave me a tour, that was great, I remember it, it's not safe, got to do something about it, got it, no question, needs to be on the list. My question is, the cost, what do we, are we like completely redoing the stairs, or are we just taking out the flagstone and trying to, you know, put some other material on and get rid of the edges and the trip hazards? Could you describe what it is that costs so much money?
Sure. Those are original flagstone stairs, so the flagstone is actually like stacked on top of each other or one another, so they would all come out. We'd be putting in cement or concrete stairs and then doing an overlay, you know, some stonework on the top so that they at least, at least have that natural, you know, feel of the original. But they, we would not be replacing it with flagstone, we'd be replacing it with concrete, because it's safer.
But part of the design is to make sure that it's ADA accessible and meets all the requirements. So they might, they might move slightly, I mean, there's design work in it, right?
Yep.
And the flagstone that you're putting on top of the cement, is that like really costly, or is that not as much of the cost, or?
I would, I would need to look. I know our, Brett found a similar project that we looked at and kind of evaluated the costs, and that was, you know, what I specified, the concrete and then the overlay. But the design portion recommended for next year, we would flesh out all those specific details and see what is most conducive to that site and location and the specifics.
Okay, next question. So 2223, the total's 350,000. I see that we get 53,000 from Recycle Smart, 25,000 from PEG, 30,000 from COPS. Are those grants, or what is that money?
They're all restricted funds, so they can only be used for qualifying projects.
Okay. And would you say, are those ongoing opportunities of revenue to fund other unfunded needs in the year, or the nature of their restriction, probably not?
You know, each fund is a little bit different. For example, I can't think of a project that we use the Recycle Smart money for in this fiscal year, so those opportunities don't come up as frequently. The COPS funding, we have kind of regularly started using for police vehicles as it's available. And then the PEG funding or the Comcast funding, I think we only had $6,000 utilized in the current fiscal year, so those opportunities don't come along quite as frequently either.
So if we're still comfortable with the annual average of 450,000 a year, we don't have any ongoing recurring funding source at that level of 450,000, is that correct?
That's my understanding, right.
Okay, and then finally?
Based on the council's policy, what we do is look at the, if there's surplus from the prior years, and that 50% of that is delegated towards asset replacement. So that's how we've ended up funding the program for the last few years.
Right. And do you believe taking the amount over 50% from the general reserve could be an ongoing funding for $450,000 a year to fund asset replacement?
I don't believe that.
I'm sorry, is this, are we still on topic here?
Yes, yes, I am. She had, she had mentioned the policy of using reserves over 50%, and I'm asking if that policy could fund asset replacement. It's in the staff report.
In some years it hasn't, and most recent years it hasn't, and in past years, when we had a fiscal emergency, it has not.
Right, okay, thank you. And my last question is attachment B, which is the policy statement that you were referring to, which basically says, an attempt to basically fund the unfunded need of asset replacement, which I think is clear, set, I think, back in '15 to advise councils. And my question is, did that, is that policy, to your knowledge, understand? And my question is, did they, has that policy, to your knowledge, understanding you haven't been here since '15, has, is that policy in any way tied the hands of the town councils, or if the council wanted to change that policy, they could? Is that true?
This, this is totally off-topic.
It's in the staff report.
But this is, this has nothing to do with capital asset replacement.
It's the policy in the staff report.
Just because something's mentioned in the staff report doesn't make it on the agenda. Denise, am I, I mean, I think I'm right on this.
You have the discretion as the chair to make that determination.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any, okay, any public comment? See no public comment. Let's go back for council member comments. Do, I, I think we're, we're like six minutes away, so I think a motion to extend the meeting just by a scoach would be appropriate.
I move, Mayor, I move that we extend the meeting to 10:45, recognizing that we have two items under communications we need to yet address.
I don't know that we need to talk about them, but yeah, okay. We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Vice Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Onoda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. All right, where were we? I just closed public comments, so now it's time for council member comments and suggestions and feedback. Vice Mayor?
I'm the only one not to step back. So, I, I spent time with staff on this, this report and the subject and moving the, these projects forward. I would love to see that flagstone project accelerated, but I understand that the design work needs to be done, and then there's a process that has to be followed that will may well put it into the actual construction next year. I, I otherwise support everything that's, that's being proposed. So, my input.
Thank you. Any other input? Cynthia?
I support everything that's being proposed. I appreciated hearing some of the rationale behind the steps. Sounds a bit complicated, but necessary. So, I'm comfortable to move forward today.
Anything on, on my left?
I just think this is fabulous. I've been through council when we had no money, and this is fabulous. We have grants, we have all kinds of things, and I understand that the flagstone has, has needs and that we want, we don't want to pull the rug out from under wedge wood quite so quickly, and I feel like if we, if we pushed that staircase forward, that would happen. And so, I think it's all just absolutely hunky-darky. If that's a word.
No.
It's not.
I, I guess, you know, what I am struck by is just the, the, the level of analysis. I mean, this started with the 2019 study, and there has been constant updating and reassessments and reconsideration based on facts and circumstances, and, you know, the occasional blip, the fence on the escape bar came out of the blue, but I just really appreciate how iterative and rigorous this process has been, and, and I also appreciate that we get multiple bites of the apple before we're at the go-no-go stage at the end of June in adopting the budget. So, thank you. All right.
Ditto.
That's, we are done. Thank you, Brianna, appreciate the, the brevity of the presentation, but you, you hit the high point, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion items, there are none. Next item, council requests for future agenda items. Mike?
I move the town council make a commitment to review whether or not the full town of Moraga should have a noise ordinance and prioritize such ordinance as appropriate, given other priorities.
I second that.
Any, any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, I looked with, with staff's help, I looked to see what we have so far as noise is concerned, and we do have information.
Teresa, I think we have to be careful. I think you're getting into the merits.
Okay, that's all I
If I, if I may ask, just a clarification, that, Mike, your, your motion takes into account the fact that this would be a planning endeavor, and the planning is way oversubscribed until January 2023.
Correct, and that's why the, just to repeat the words, we are making a commitment to do this, and will prioritize it given other priorities.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to emphasize that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
And that is why I seconded it.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
How many ayes do we have? I can't tell. We have four ayes, so the motion, do we have a no?
So, I don't want to say yes when we already have something, so I guess I'm, I'm
Are you abstaining?
I don't know what I'm doing.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll consider it four ayes and an abstention.
You know what, I'll go ahead and say yes.
Okay, so it passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Any other future agenda items? All right, communications. We have two. Did you want to say something, Teresa? No, there's only two on the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Steve, there's a letter of support for Contra Costa County Fire Grant Application. Did you want to comment on that, Steve?
Very briefly, like the fire break, the shaded fuel break that begins at the tunnel, it's the East Bay Hills Tunnel fuel break that's gonna head south, and then at basically a canyon turn east, and then eventually turn north, and there is another proposed fuel break being proposed for Cal Fire, Wanna Creek, which will greatly encircle Rossmore and capture a piece of Moraga, including actually the Bluffs. And so, it's a $4.9 million grant, and this is simply a letter supporting that, that grant application.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. Any, any questions on that letter? All right, and then on, on B, just, just for, for background, so this is a letter that the, the city of Arinda asked us to write in support of a grant application that is going, the lead is Arinda, but it's on behalf of all three La Mirinda communities to get funding from the federal government for the smart signal program, even though we have, what, how many signals in town? It, the, the idea behind it is to coordinate the single, signals within La Mirinda, which will be particularly useful for two things at least, one is traffic mitigation and two is evacuations. So, this is funding that we were trying to seek before that was withheld, but it's still sitting in Congress, and so the hope is to extract it this year.
Good.
Madam Mayor? We're not taking any action on these items 13A and B, but since we do still have two members in the audience, I thought it might be a good opportunity to take a public comment.
Thank you, Denise. Anybody want to comment on either of these letters? And thank you for being with us at 10:30. Really nice to see you. It's nice to see some faces in the audience. Okay, I'll close public comment. Adjournment?
I would like to bring up something about communications. Another communication.
I don't think we can talk about something that's not on here.
So, yeah, I guess I'm unsure about how the communications works, because getting emails from residents is not part of communications, is that what you're saying?
Communications are official letters that are sent on behalf of the town, as the town, or letters received by the town that are
Okay, so emails received, I would assume would be part of letters received.
No.
No. Okay, so where would one talk about an email that someone wrote to a council member for action?
In your report.
Okay, good, I'll do it in my report next time. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to adjourn in memory of Merrill Gilland?
Yes.
Yes, and so just, thank you, Cynthia. So, Merrill Gilland, who was the third mayor of Moraga and one of the founders, and, you know, he was instrumental in the incorporation, passed away recently. I'd like the council to know that we sent a letter of condolence to his widow in Montana, so expressing our gratitude for his many contributions to the town and our sympathies with her. And so, I think that that's a wonderful idea, so let's adjourn in memory of Merrill Gilland.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody, good night.